All right, let's go ahead and get started and start with our public works department. Go ahead.
Awesome. Yeah, so I need to use my part, sorry. There's my map. Sorry, you made it complicated.
No, you're fine. I just got away from people.
You know, Travis can be on.
Does it work?
Yeah, I do remember it.
I worked up again, I think.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that doesn't show up on the site, you see.
Oh, I'm not sharing that? Oh, yeah, I'm not sharing it. Let me try that again. Sorry. I have some difficulties. They're not making it look uncomfortable. I'm just not very good at my job.
That's not accurate.
Okay, I think we're there.
Okay, awesome. We'll go ahead and get started. So this is our 2024 Public Works Annual Report. And as you'll see, you have Public Works staff here tonight to be here. Okay, so this year's report looks a little bit different than what we've historically done. And then last year, when we collectively presented, Councilmember Nick Mather mentioned, he was joking, he said something like, this is a bunch of info, it's great, like twice if you're okay, or something like that. And so we kind of shifted the approach this year and really made this report about what it feels like to be in Public Works, what it looks like, and how it's being perceived by our team. So I think I'll just start out with an organizational chart. All of this is directly from the report itself, just sent us up here to share reviews if I want to. And I should have jumped in, but we're roughly 29, 30 people in the Public Works Department. So we have what we call the five divisions, and as you hear me talk throughout this about the different divisions, we have utilities, parks, facilities, waste water, and water are the five divisions, and then admin functions and the division, but we don't really refer to it as it. So here tonight, we have John Johnson, who's our park supervisor. We have Sue Fagan, who is our new conduct and grant coordinator. Kate Ko Chan, who's our interim VIP manager, and Chris Thanky, who is our water supervisor. So this just kind of shows the breakdown of each of the divisions and how, rather than how the department. We also provided a staffing timeline this year, just to kind of give you an idea of what it looks like from the staffing perspective of Public Works. There was a lot of changeover. And also this year, as we're looking at shifting how we function from these seasonal positions, I just wanted to be able to exemplify for you what that looks like to have seasonal turnover on our team. We ended up having a couple of positions that were vacated mid-season. So that just creates a lot of challenges. Those were specifically in the first part. So it's just challenging when we have staffing turnovers, especially at these really quick intervals. But to me, some of those positions. But this really, it was a challenge. 2024 had a lot of turnover, a lot of changes. And this just kind of shows that. Also, I'm going to briefly cover our 2024 strategic plan. These are the four goals, and in your report, it has a summary of where, what progress we need on each one of those goals that I wasn't going to go over in much detail, but really just highlighting the four goals that we have for the conference, where extract institutional knowledge, track work data, enhance workplace culture, shift from reactive culture to a proactive culture, and strengthen internal and external relationships. So together, as a leadership team, we looked at our 24 strategic plan and then determined what our 25 strategic plan would be. And we ended up compiling all of the objectives that we have for this year into three goals. The first two are the same. Extract institutional knowledge, track work data, enhance workplace culture. And then we compiled a bunch of the other things into complete policy of processing. So stepping into each one of these a little bit more. They're included in your report. I don't want to cover them in a bunch of detail, but just want to exemplify some of the things that we're looking at underneath these goals. Utilizing our asset essentials, which is under border system. Looking at standardizing materials and equipment across the department. Insolidating and organizing data, which includes all sorts of different aspects records. Little things. And then advance the completion of standard operating procedures amongst all of our divisions. Our goal number two is enhance workplace culture. So the, we have seven objectives under this goal for this year, which center around bilingual communication. That was something that was brought forward by staff that we really appreciated, knowing it was something that's important to our staff members. Looking at team safety meetings and trainings. And together with that is check-in and check-out procedures for our remote staff. So both water and wastewater have days where they're working during no one else's on staff. At remote locations that if something was to occur, no one would know about it. So just looking at formalizing check-in, check-out procedures for team safety. All these cost saving events. So this is really shifting within each division from having people have specific tasks to setting up job duty rotations. So that there's more equity across the divisions. And again, this is like a holistic thing we're looking at, where you value the team's success. They exist in all of this, so. But yeah, looking at succession planning and having redundancy in each division as well. We're also continuing to explore schedule flexibilities within the CBA. And that's something that has seen to our really increased morale in our department. Is one of the most common schedules that our staff is on is the nine and eight schedule. So a 36-hour week followed by a 44-hour. So working nine hours the first Friday is eight hours, and then the following week, nine hours, so Friday off. Which is allowable in our CBA and has been quite common amongst our staff, giving people two, three-day weekends per month. The time with the cross-union event is the job duty rotation as an engineering board. And then we did have a lot of staff requests for this additional technology thing. Computer literacy. So that kind of summarizes our goal number two, all around workplace culture. And there's a ton under our goal number three. Really, the first ones are around long-term planning. So we're talking about a hundred-year capital plan or place schedule, which does sound ridiculous, but really at the end of the day, we want to have everything that we're looking towards being set up for replacement. So we want Chantel to know, okay, when we're putting a piece of pipe in the ground that has a 50-year life, this is when we would expect to replace that pipe, so that we can budget early on and go far into advance what it's going to look like to just replace infrastructure that we have, just starting out just new age. And ready capital improvement program and being a preservation program initiatives are a lot better than otherwise. So just putting these systems in place so that we can replace and repair our infrastructure before it does get fully moved. Maintain a sustainable and sustainable ER and R program. This is for our vehicles and equipment. And this ties right in with the fleet management contract that was authorized in the last few months. Expanding the maintenance programs, and this covers a bunch of different things across all the divisions. One of the most clear and obvious ones that you can see is our catch base cleaning program. That's something I've brought up before. But across all divisions, we're looking at expanding the preventative maintenance programs. Part of that, but we felt like it was necessary to pull out as its own separate objective in here was continuing the fat soil and grease program. This is, this is all done through our wastewater division. But with only two staff members in that division right now, we have fallen off on duty on our regular fog inspections, which has been intentional because we only have two staff members right now. But we'll be, we just hired a third operator, and so we will be bringing back the fog program this year. The agent approved instruction to the system. Increase our involvement in emergency management planning. Enhance communications, additional use permits. And this is really centered around coordinating community development, which is something that we are doing, but just have to formalize and continue. We're looking at identifying opportunities to strengthen cybersecurity. So in both our water and wastewater systems, there's a lot of devices that are on the network, and so we're just wanting to really formalize cybersecurity now of all things. We're also looking at advancing some of the master plans we're working on. Sewer waters, stormwater, and then the parks master plan is going to be part of the comprehensive. So all those will be making progress this year. Strengthen internal, external relationships. And we decided to move this to an objective versus a standalone goal that we had last year, just because it's something that is ongoing. But really, this looks like partnership with agencies in the area, other municipalities, who've done some equipment sharing, material sharing as needed. And really having as an objective here is just formalizing when those opportunities arise, it's something that we do want to pursue. So if there's an agency who needs some help from us, we want to help them so that they'll have a lesson. Enhance interdepartmental view of the community, which I think is pretty self-explanatory. Define and improve the recycle center level of service and expectations. And this really does tie into what Savi and I talked about, one of the previous study sessions with Robert, is just reevaluating the recycle center and how that functions, what that looks like before. And then the very last one we have here is tracking every day staff on the uniform purchase calls. These together tie what we're doing in this department in 25. And that's a lot. Would you have any questions? Are you curious about?
I was gonna ask maybe how much of a concern or there's vulnerabilities with our cybersecurity?
We just want to further investigate and yeah, see what those look like, see what our vulnerabilities are and how we can mitigate them.
Okay.
I don't know, when you do the tech, tech training, Republic Works, can I attend?
Yes. Welcome to join us.
I'm just lucky to know.
So this is the really fun part. So earlier this year, we completed an employee engagement survey with just various questions for everyone in our department. This was an anonymous survey, and really our goal here is just to understand where we stand and how we can improve moving forward. And my goal here is to complete this same survey year over year, so we can see what our trends look like. Are we doing a better job, or are there areas that we're falling short in not, or decreasing in? So this first one is just all about how you feel at work. Workload is manageable. It's through what I'm supposed to work on. The department is focusing on the right things. I have everything I need to do my job. I know where the department is heading, and I enjoy coming to work. And all of these, they're like a 75 or a 10. Again, like, no judgment here, just trying to understand what our baseline looks like and how we're staying. And then some of these questions, again, are just giving an understanding, like, how as a division, a department, and an organization can we improve? And where, where do we have potential gaps that we can focus on and really make improvements? So this is how, or do you feel comfortable providing feedback to get you to improve, so the division and department and then the organization?
So with the organization, is that considering the city of Lethmore, with that?
Entirely, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And we, I didn't get any more specific questions. I just said city as a whole.
Okay.
So I, yeah. So then the long questions break out, they're very similar, so I just wanted to highlight this. We talked about appreciation versus support. And the, the rest of the survey questions center on these. So appreciation is like the act of acknowledgement and expressing empathy, whereas support is providing factual assistance and resources in order to do your job. So the first one we touched on was appreciation, how appreciated do you feel in the division, for the department, and the organization? And as a follow-up to that, I asked, what would make you feel more appreciated? And so this was again, just a fun place to learn where people are, how people want to feel appreciated, and how we can do a better job of showing that that we appreciate them. So you can read these, but some are just thank you, public shout-out, hire cap on PTO. I kind of said like, open-ended, you can be whatever you want it to be. So these are the responses that we got. And then how supported do you feel, or given the resources in order to do your job? So in the division, department, and organization. And one of the really big things that came out of feeling more supported were additional staff and a new Public Works campus.
The Public Works campus.
That's why those are bolded a little bit more. They, there were a lot of responses that centered around.
Yes, sir.
And then these, these last ones, what do you love most about your job? I really enjoyed these. I thought they were fun, but a lot of them have to do with relationships, coworkers, being a part of the team, collaboration, and full results. That's three out of the benefit side of things. And then if you could, I did tell them, like, this is going to be shared with this council. So this last question, if you could share one piece of feedback with the city council, what would it be? Thank you. Keep workers satisfied when making decisions. Take time and then we pull the works team. Keep the water source diverse. So these are the responses we got. Oh, and then, that's right.
Andy, have a question for the survey?
Yeah.
What was the participation rate? Did, did everyone in Public Works fill out this survey, or did like, you know, about how many people did or didn't, or?
Yes, I should. We did our most recent department meeting. So is everyone who was there that day at the department meeting?
Okay.
It's 5% probably.
Yeah.
About 85% of all of them, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So we did it's like a live mentoring, so that we could see results and kind of look at the averages.
Okay.
Any other questions before I jump into my next piece on employee engagement circle?
I was gonna ask Andy, what's the PTO on collaboration?
Pay time off. Oh, pay time off.
You want more?
Tell who the retiree is. I just didn't know what it stood for, as far as.
Oh, that's a great question, yeah. And then the report also highlights just some of the projects that were completed in 2024, the bigger capital projects. I do really want to give John a shout-out. He is the one who knew that the Osborn playground put a lot of time and effort into that. And he's really the one that had the vision and led that project through completion. So, thank you, John.
It's packed every day, even in the rain.
Those are not fun compared to that. I mean, the park law, the scrub seals, three payments, and then finish out the phase three here of this space. Any questions on projects? You hear about them all the time, sorry. As a class, and so without our 2024 metrics. So these are just some fun statistics that Amber pulled for us, just to give an idea of what it looks like to be in the department. So I also have part of the leadership team here too. If you had any, again, no one has to answer questions, but if there's anything you want to know from me or anyone on the leadership team about where the department is or where the department is going. Happy to, is there any questions you might have?
Sue, what's the best part of your change?
I get to focus more on, it kind of always felt like words of public works, I get to focus on the contracts, learning something new with grant reimbursements, which I haven't really had the opportunity to learn anything brand-new in a really long time. But not being pulled away with doing permits or grant, a level of grant reimbursement, then that's emailed to me while I'm working on a special use permit, and it's just just kind of all over the place. And so filing them, filing and organizing little project. That's been on my wayside. And so I would flip, jump in and go paperless and really focus on that. And, and the new part of my job will be closing out projects. So there's a but a few things that, and just bring the element, you should, things have a good crack, but organizing is my thing, so. I don't feel, it doesn't feel like work.
She said that today, she's like in the second, it doesn't even feel like work.
I was gonna ask, Andy, if you knew, so how's the safety record? How's the injury rate, that kind of thing? Do you have any idea?
I don't have a safety record for something specific.
Nope, just injuries on the job. Did they go up? Did they stay the same? Did they drop? Did they?
Great question.
It is a good question.
So from an LNI perspective, we don't have a lot.
Right.
I have a semi, excuse me, bi-annual meeting. Semi-annual meeting, there we go. I have a semi-annual meeting with our claims adjuster, and she met with me just like a week or two ago. And she goes, well, we don't really have anything to talk about. So LNI is good. We do have small incidences that do happen. I'd say one or two a year at best. Zero is often the notch. And then from a claims perspective, being that people are having a situation with the city and filing a claim against the city. I actually added that one up the other day, and don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure it's 13 for the last three years in a row every year. But those claims range on different things. Sometimes it's street-related, sometimes it's a vehicle, we hit something, or could be a slip and fall, could be a trip and fall. We hit a mailbox, we hit a fence with snow, yeah, it's just, it's a variety of things across the board.
Okay.
Overall, we're told we're not bad for the pool. WSCI is our insurance coverage, and we're in a risk pool. And our claims are much lower than most cities, because we do not have police and fire.
We don't have, oh, police and fire.
Yeah, PTSD is a massive claim that's been happening since COVID, for police and fire.
Okay.
So it's really hurting the risk pools a lot. They're willing to really work on that with, with individuals who are suffering from that.
I just figured there was probably in Public Works, a proactive preventative injury program, so that awareness is up and you know, injuries don't happen as much, or whatever. I mean, you're still doing a hard job, there's some risk in it. No matter what you do, no matter how you plan, but I just was kind of curious about that whole thing, so.
We do have an internal safety committee. John's on the committee, Chris is on the committee. And he will be coming soon. She's been with a construction meeting in the way of this meeting, but she's been coming soon and talking before. We actually have a representative from every division, including Public Works, City Development, and Finance as well. And we get together every month, we talk about these claims, how to mitigate these claims. Anytime we do have LNI issues, we talk about, hey, that's our next toolbox talk. Toolbox talks are things that all these divisions do frequently.
Okay.
Yeah, so with this goal, that's where this safety needs, and even like the check-in, check-out, kind of following with that too.
Okay.
Like, let, anything you guys want to share related to sleep, please?
No, one thing else is when we do consider reports, when something does happen, we usually do kind of like, what have we done to mitigate that? Or prevent that from happening, that's kind of being performed. And then by chance, also kind of do an afteract.
Other questions?
It's really nice to have you guys here. Get to put face with me.
Yeah, great to have you guys just.
Did you guys, two that haven't talked, do you guys want to give us any information, or all as well?
I'm, I'm new. It's January, and I really love working for the city. So it's really nice to get to put all of your needs to.
Yes, it's tight, boys.
I would just say for the upcoming year in the Water Division, a couple of our main focuses will be improving water quality on and just overall building, trying to bolster the resiliency of the system. So looking for some more responsibility that might affect water production expense, you can focus on.
Thank you.
Has the, not having the fog operational, has that had an impact on your work?
That's actually a waste program.
What's that?
That's the wastewater department.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, wastewater wasn't able to be here tonight, and unfortunately, Rick is about sick from utilities as well. I guess, I can't, I can't speak to that right now.
Right.
I think it's honestly going to be more of a long-term issue, just because that program hasn't been in effect. Because we haven't verified that restaurants have actually been being the grease traps, it'll, it'll be down the line when we'll really realize what the full impact of that is.
I just remember when I did a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, which was pretty phenomenal.
Yeah.
And one of the, one of the workers mentioned, you know, we don't know what the status is of the fog, who's taking, if it's being inspected, if it's being done, and you know, so. And I didn't even know there was such a thing until they brought it up. So I thought, oh, good. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so our newest operator is JB High, who is coming from our Parks Department, and he's starting at the beginning of April. So once he's on board, then to be able to have enough staff and coverage to go.
Do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next week already.
I know. Anything else for them?
Hi. That's great. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
How's the advisory committee?
Should have said whether you're still on the main page, but shout-out, they do a really great job.
Yeah.
Were you going to share your presentation?
Did you play it from there? Yeah.
Do you want the clicker?
Yeah. Hopefully they're trying to. Yeah, of course.
Let me share it. Thanks, Tom. Let me share it. Thanks, Tom.
Oh, duh. Excellent. So, okay, yeah, council, mayor, staff. I'm Kurt Peterson. I think I know most of you folks. But thanks for the opportunity to talk to you today about the Housing Advisory Committee. And we'll just jump right in. Quickly, you might be asking. What is the Housing Advisory Committee? Oh, one thing I did want to mention, my goals with this discussion today. Is really just to do an introduction, let you guys know who, what is the Housing Advisory Committee. But also to really float some ideas that we're working with and get your early feedback. So nothing formal here in any way. But just to put these ideas forward to really give you the opportunity to say, hey, that sounds like you're on the right track or no, that's the wrong track. Uh, but who are we and what are we, what are we tasked with doing? A lot of it revolves around investing the $200,000 per year that's allocated. Towards housing and figuring out what do you do with that, that investment? And actually, it's accrued up to a 400K amount today. Um, in addition to that, we're, we're focused on identifying options for possibly funding land purchases. So how can we? Leverage beyond just that 200K into other things as well. Taking a first look at some of the projects that are being proposed or ideas that are being suggested on how to spend that money. By taking a review of it first, going a little bit deeper into it, we hope to bring you as the council. A more informed set of information. And then ultimately identify infrastructure improvements. And there's actually some specific examples of all of these that are in flight right now. Who's on the advisory committee? Our chair Justin couldn't be here tonight. That's because his son was, I think he's getting up at Mission Ridge. There's a skiing event there. It's the last one of the year, so understandable that he couldn't make it. Karen is our vice chair and those are the other members of the group. And then, of course, Steve and Mike are only council as advisory council members on our committee. So that's who we are. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, where are we at as a committee? We spent most of 2024, I think. In a education phase, really kind of educating ourselves, talking to developers, builders. Um, local charities, local individuals, even talked to a couple of candidates for office. Um, we spoke to bankers, investors, things like that, and really tried to educate ourselves a little bit around the whole problem as it pertains to. Housing and and affordable housing and where are the issues, where are the challenges? And getting these different points of view. And that's what we focused on initially. In 2025, though, we want to shift our focus to more action. We feel like we've learned a lot. There's always more to learn, but we really want to shift into four key areas. One of them is the request for ideas. We run along this request for proposals, but it's not nearly anything as formal as that. It's more about making a formal request to the community to say, hey. Bring us your ideas, bring us some input, bring us some suggestions on what you think could be a good project to take advantage of. In order to drive affordable housing. And and really kind of almost making that a semi formal process because. What we found in the education phase and stuff was just kind of randomly popping up, but, you know, wasn't really being guided. Um, we want to also think about identifying existing properties or properties that the city owns. And can those be used as a tool of investment in some way? Right? So if we can't have dollars, but we have dirt, you know, what can we do with that? That could be, that'd be an interesting opportunity there. Um, we want to get more committed with the community and and more political connection as well. To give you an example of that, one of the early things that the committee did was write, wrote a. A letter signed by the entire committee to our representative Steele as it relates to one of the house bills related to affordable housing. So. How can we take advantage of this group and use it to drive in in different ways than just maybe. Our town level, you know, can we, can we reach further more and speak on behalf of affordable housing that will come back and help us? And then ultimately, we we do have visions of a Lebanon word specific. Housing summit or maybe more, think a bit more like a workshop, maybe not as grand as a summit, but more of a workshop. That was specific to Lebanon, that brought together all those different types of people that I mentioned before, you know, bankers, builders, developers. And and charitable organizations to really talk about how to bring a real project or set of products to life. Again, specific to Lebanon. So we do, we do envision something like that down the road that we'd like to strike. So that's the year of action for 2025 for the committee. But I do want to now shift into what I mentioned before earlier that that we want to float a couple of concepts to you. And right now, it's going to be three alone, two of which I'll dive into this presentation. One is the cottage housing event. This is partnering with Tom Lynn and Matt Melton. Development of city-owned land on Rattlesnake Hill. And then some land swapping opportunities and not actually going to dive into that one because we're still, you know, very early in in kind of figuring that one out. What we might bring forward on that. Let's dive into each of those first two. Initially, they were planning on building, you know, six lots and building duplexes. But this one, I think, is very exciting because. Frankly, because of the actions of this council and and the ordinances that you guys passed. Around cottage housing and other things, they changed directions, which is exactly the kind of behavior I think we're looking to promote. So it's really exciting moment to hear them talk about, oh, as soon as this was approved, we went down a different path and they started looking at the cottage housing path, which was very exciting. Um, something I want to also call out is that they're very, very focused, both Matt and Tom, on focus on offering this housing to business employees. School district employees, healthcare workers, they are all in when it comes to the story of workforce house. And and so they're asking, well, how can we figure out how to make sure to offer it to those types of individuals? So that's something that we're also talking with them a little bit to, you know, figure out, can we help in any way in that area? Um, they're open, they're thinking about talking to men, you know, bring this thing to life and then maybe hand it over. To an organization that has currently at scale now, the one, the biggest, I think, at scale, portable housing. Management model in our city right now. So instead of reinventing the wheel, why not have them continue to manage it as an affordable housing? Offering of some kind. Um, so where they're at right now, they're in the next steps of their process to get very specific around the cost. They are looking at pre manufactured homes and. There's some exciting things happening on that front. If you haven't. Delved into that, it's some really good, really cool technology coming to bear to drive down the cost of manufacturing homes, things like that. This might be. Uh, you know, a unique opportunity to have Lebanon work become a showcase for us, some of that kind of thing. Um, so anyway, this is just, it's, it's a, it's early, early, early stage, but we're involved early. Such that we can encourage them to take advantage of the various ordinances in the proper way. Um, to get an early look at what the blockers they may be running into and how we can maybe help them. So stuff like that. Okay, this next project. Uh, or not, it's not a project, idea. Nice idea is really, there's some land out of Rattlesnake Hill and we've got a couple of photos here and I'm going to play a video in a minute of the of the property. Thanks to Zebra, photographer, took some photo. But, you know. This is that concept that, hey, if we don't have cash, but we have land, maybe there's something to be done there. And this is a piece of property that maybe could be utilized to, as a piece of investment to help thrive. Develop. And again, maybe working with a group. I'll mention again, men as as somebody that would, you know, may own the dirt. And then, you know, keep it perpetually affordable as as things go forward in time. But let's just take a look at. All right, that gives you a little bit of a sense of the piece of property itself. It's not the flattest piece of property, but there's a lot of things that can be done there to. To maybe, you know, drive, drive some interest in converting. And it's in a very walkable. Location still, so that's, that's kind of exciting as well. So thinking of this, our group, the, the committee itself has some next steps. We're, we're thinking about. Well, just kind of some smaller things right now, putting a $50,000 investment for a feasibility study. I mean, then, Maggie, what's?
For inclusionary zone.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Another ordinance which would then again potentially drive. More opportunities and projects out there. Uh, we want to get the specific details around the cottage development project and the rattlesnake property. So we'll start developing that a little bit more and get. Get more information. Um, we do want to formalize, as I talked about at the beginning of the presentation, this quest for idea process. Figure out what that looks like, have a, an intake. Uh, capability of some kind so that, so that people can can start thinking about, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of energy around affordable housing. How do we go to that next step and turn it into actual proposals and projects? Um, coordinating with the, the planning commission is another big one that's on our radar and we kind of see. Uh, the need for our committee to work hand in glove with them, obviously, as they create ordinances and recommendations around that. We're thinking about what kind of projects can take advantage of it and how to properly take advantage of them. Uh, and then, of course, at the end of the day, bring to you actual proposals that you can. Uh, weigh in on and then ideally approve for to move forward. Um, so that's kind of the Housing Advisory Committee. Let me stop there and. And take questions or comments.
You ready?
Does this sound like the right types of things to be focused on?
I like it. Yeah.
Think so.
Yeah.
Good. Are there things that you can think of or come across your desk that you think we should be thinking about in addition? To where we're at today?
I think you're on the right track.
Go ahead.
Yeah, respective.
Well, I don't want to. Take up more time, unnecessary, but appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Well, not you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to show folks it's not as steep as they thought. You know, it's a big slope up there.
That other source of funding, you'll just be able to take off like crazy. That would be great.
I do join some of the chairman.
And by the way, yeah, Kurt, I'll, I'll just thank him publicly. He was one of the ones who testified it. Couple of times before both committees in the Senate and the House for our Lebanon worths need and it was, um. It was. He, he added the dimension of somebody who actually houses people in, in short term. Um, and being for. Not, not this being anti short term rentals, but. Helping them, helping us keep a community. So it was a good voice to have testifying.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for doing that, Kurt.
All right. Next up is also a maybe thing.
Yeah, this should be really quick. We have an annexation request that was submitted by Adam Feger. A piece of property that's about a half an acre. It's located at the end of West Benton, near Mill and Mine. Now that intersection is just south of the property we annexed. Recently, just at the end of last year. Uh, he's seeking to develop this with a single family home or potentially duplex if there was. Or a debut. That needs sewer because of the size of the lot. It does have a wetland buffer on it as well. And so trying to put in a grain field there just. Doesn't make a lot of sense. So in order to obtain a water and sewer from the city, he is requesting an annexation. That's the driving force behind this. Uh, there was a map that was, I don't think, correct in his application and, um. Again, this isn't the formal. Request to go to the county, we'll clean it up a bit, but I just wanted to get input from the council before moving it forward. I could share a screen so you can see kind of. Kind of do a side by side aerial and zoning view. The, it's not super amazing or anything, but it's kind of right next to the split zone property here. I'd love to clean up that boundary. Um, this is currently being taxed as a city. Uh, taxable lot, so I think cleaning that up.
A smaller lot?
A smaller lot, yeah. Uh, so I'm sorry, I highlighted both, just kind of show that line, but this is the parcel here that is requesting annexation. Uh, and then this is kind of that aerial view. You can see the wetland here, so there is a buffer, a property. And so he's just really interested in developing it.
How does that parcel have? Because it's only that little corner that it touches the right of way.
Uh, he's going to have to get, and he's in the process of getting an easement from Tom Lynn.
Oh.
Uh, this was a boundary line adjustment done by the county.
Be better for him to just boundary line with Tom Lynn and touch the right of way.
That was my recommendation, but that was not something.
But he would give him these.
He would give him the easement.
How large is that addition, Gabby?
It's like point five acres.
Point five acres.
The total area of his lot.
Okay.
So I just wanted feedback to see if I should move this forward.
Maggie?
Any concerns?
I'm glad, you know, on Google Maps, there, there's two addresses. For that. Understand.
Sorry, this one is not part of it. I accidentally highlighted it. So this one shouldn't even have an address.
It does have an address because there's something built on it.
See here. There's. One eight three mill and then.
It's the.
Is it the same?
No, so you're looking at where the actual house is located and that's not the parcel we're looking at.
Right, the parcel is back here.
Yeah, and it doesn't have a house on it.
Right, so you know what, do we know where it is?
It's the one right next to the road though, where West Benton continues.
Okay.
That's the. Like this one, okay.
Yeah, one name through mine is that a house that it's behind.
Okay, so it's.
Got you.
I think the idea is that once this property just south is developed, that this road would kind of extend. Possibly, so this would be a mill or sorry, West Benton would be improved to an extent into a driveway. Uh, and so I.
Okay.
Uh, the concern with just doing the boundary line adjustment was. The owner of this property didn't want it to impede a future development or dedication. Uh, so it would just, it's happy or easement at this point.
Wouldn't an easement? Equal similar restrictions? Just saying.
If he gives them an easement. Or grants an easement to allow Mr. Feger to access his property, but then Tom Lynn goes to develop that property at a later date. You can still allow Adam to access that easement through a new broker.
Yeah.
Is that, so that's city property that kind of looking at the extension of.
That's West Benton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's developed.
So that's the city's property right now, right?
Yeah.
Just like an alley or or extended street, yeah. Okay.
So I think the goal.
So what he didn't want to have to do was to develop that street in order to get access.
And we have had a lot of discussions with public works about how to. Make this work.
I guess I wasn't clear, Maggie, how he was going to access that additional property.
Going to use, he's just going to access off the unimproved like. Yeah, like. I don't have a full detail of like a plan yet, but we'll have to look at our standard as what we require him to improve or. But in a driveway, like some kind of a piece of. Driveway set.
Yeah, right.
But this is not a, this is just the annexation portion. It's not the development.
Yeah, true.
Conversation. He just needs the annexation before he can do anything with the property if he wants to.
Could this be put off till next week, our next study session? I didn't look at it and I can't really. Tell anything by looking at this.
Yeah, and that map is not correct that he has.
Oh, great.
The map I have pulled up is the correct map.
Yeah.
There are no actions, which is, should I put that forward with the, through the process? Uh, he's a first aid law. I have a timeline I have to work through. So there would be a comment period for the. Surrounding properties. We'd ask other jurisdictions for input. You would have a public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, there would be a formal public process, just like we did with the last one. This is just, I just want your. Any concerns upfront?
Not really. I think it's going to take some extra coordination with Land County. The map you're showing from. Our GIS is very different than what Shuland County shows on theirs.
I went to Shuland County and it showed this. I don't know where we got that.
Not today. It doesn't show single family residential zoning at all on that smaller parcel.
They won't show our zoning in M G A, right?
Yeah, they do.
They also don't show, it's hard that you can't zoom in still, the.
Well, and they just have different property boundaries because they don't highlight the city limits. And so they're showing that that smaller lots not even in the city limits.
And it's being taxed that it's in the city limit. So I think they're they're.
And see it on the assessor records that they're taxing it that way, but.
We've seen a lot of errors on the county.
Stuff going on.
The county's GIS, we've had to contact them a few times to make some corrections, so I wouldn't. And then we do coordinate with them. The initial steps is sending it to them, and if there's some glaring issues, they will. Tell us um and walk through that, so it will take some coordination for sure.
Uh is there any way we we can clean up our city limit boundary a little bit more in that area too? Because it's kind of cutting off that little corner of Chester Marler's property. Wait, yeah, so there's like a that tiny little triangle. Part of that's in the city limits, but the rest of the parcel's not.
And it's done so many. Yeah, that would be nice.
Tom Lynn wants to annex as well, so I think we should consider.
I just have to process.
One's profit at the same time.
Yeah, I just can't hold somebody who has applied. Tell them you have to wait for these other people to apply. I've got to process it in a timeline by state law, so. I have encouraged Tom to comment since last.
He's traveling at the moment, so we won't hear from him till.
Uh but I I do agree with some of these cleanups with boundaries and maybe it's easier fix than I hope it, but those would be things to look at. For sure, this and that.
That's not accurate. Actually, the city boundary actually goes to the, we didn't go through it, it goes to the left.
Purple line is the city boundary.
Well, that's remains the city boundary.
And here's the strip. So this is like a split parcel, but it is being taxed as a city lot.
It looked like.
I would think this line should be here.
Yeah, because that's what it looks like on here. It looks like the city boundary goes out and back.
Well, and. Adam Fleeger is hoping to connect, hoping to annex so that he can connect to city services, right? Because there's no way for him to. Develop the property without city services.
That's the whole. Ball of wax right there.
Do you know where the wetland boundary falls on his property?
I don't. I have not seen any like development plans. I just know that this is one and that there is some kind of. I would like to talk with you if there were some challenges, I think.
He basically said he has to develop at that lower end of it, so imagine it takes a pretty good chunk of the upper.
And I thought I can stop sharing. Yeah, if I if I'm. During you, I'm going to move this forward. You will, it will be a level process that will be opportunial into those two pieces.
But it still exists here.
That's through both of these properties right now. So this this is Chester's property. It has that little triangle. Little triangles in the city and the rest doesn't. And half the property is in the city and the other half.
It kind of looked like on this map, like it went, it found it went out and around it, but.
Well, it's supposed to, because this property is getting taxed, but.
Oh, so it should be doing.
As a city lot, not as a county lot. That's where it should be, but that's not actually.
All right, we'll move on then. Um before you, I've got a couple of resolutions that we're hoping that we can move. Quicker than the normal process. We sent them out to you a week before your. Packet would arrive if it did get submitted early. Um we're at this time to make. Any comments or whatever, and then we're hoping to pass them, and it's because the kindliness of a couple of things. Um one, as you can see, one is related to. Our immigrant population that is such an active part of our workforce here in our town. Um and uh having. For a long, long time, and this is an affirmation of their contributions. Um and then also a a plea for our. Federal rather than just mass deportations is to figure out how to keep our workforce here in a legal way rather than. Simply um going up and picking them up and getting rid of them. Um. And so that is the one resolution is to acknowledge what they've done. Um we know that over two hundred fifty thousand in our state are here without documentation. We know that many of them have been here for multiple, multiple years and contributing. Um and quite frankly, um in my view of the world. They're the ones being taken advantage of, not taking advantage of us because without documentation. All the money that they're putting into social security, they'll never be able to get back out. But that's neither here nor there. The the what we need is because we need that workforce is a legal way for them to be here. So that's one of the resolutions. The second one is having to deal specifically if we could. Generally talk about the federal workforce and the massive layoffs, but this one. Focuses on the Forest Service because of our situation here, our dependency upon them to help us. Um with our forest health and the fact that we are um threatened, um one of the most threatened by wildfire. And have depended on the work of our Forest Service to help us. Um mitigate that very big challenge as well as our. Uh recreational areas that we depend upon as well. Um help to manage those and staff those. Um and just to let you know that. I had put this together and shared it with our ranger, um Erica Taker and. And she's the one that asked that we add that not just send it to our federal. Representatives, but would include the chief of the Forest Service as well, that they get the word of how it's impacting cities. Um so I thank her for adding that. They were um told that they could rehire. But they also then were told that that was only going to come down with further layoffs. Down the line so that the rehire would be a temporary thing. But that the staffing cuts would even be greater in the future, so um. It's, I think, very timely and hopefully you'll feel comfortable saying. Um this is, these are huge impacts potentially to our little town here. Discussion.
Have we been in contact with officials from. Uh Representative Schreier and Senators Murray and Catwell's offices to see if. A resolution like this would be materially helpful to them?
They encourage, yes, we've we've been in touch and they're on board. It's they're not the the problem, quote, but they want to hear from communities, yeah. Um tell us how this impacts you. So they're they've encouraged. Not specifically these resolutions, but they've encouraged us to let it be known how we're impacted. By the cuts and by the actions that are being taken.
This is an administration that has made immigration enforcement a cornerstone of their. Uh a cornerstone of their platform. Um there are also an administration that has shown that their actions. Uh can be punitive when people or entities are viewed as. Contrary to their. Their uh what they want to achieve. I guess what I'm what I'm saying is. Would passing like something, would passing like something like this make us a target?
Yep, yep. I don't think it would. If it did, so be it.
No, I don't. I don't know. So be it's a great answer because if the full faith and power of the federal government wishes to make the little town of Lovinworth.
No, here here's the thing. What we've got in our state is. We've got a law that says you do not look at the legality of a workforce. In fact, they are, the state is suing one of our counties because they cooperated with ICE. To deport. So we've got state laws that back us up. In saying.
If the state law says that, then what is the necessity of this resolution?
To let them know that this does impact us.
But if we already have state law in place, then we're not asking them to pass a law. It's already there, right?
We're asking them to work at passing uh ways to ge- to get the workforce here legally. We need a workforce. We've needed it forever and ever in both agriculture, hospitality now. Construction is the newest one where you see a lot of our immigrant population. We need the workforce.
I I am not disagreeing with you. I think we both agree on the same things. My point is that. I am concerned that if we pass something like this, the end result would be that. The federal government would not take time to to it and double down on efforts. To enforce that in this area, therefore kind of cutting ourselves off the knees. For what we were intending to do by passing this making worse.
Yeah, and I I I simply don't have an answer except for to say that um it's being done. Whether we want it to be done or not, like you said, they're going to be doing it. They're already doing it in our area. They are ISIS present and they're picking up and they're taking people out, so. Um would that step up? I don't, I mean, I think they're doing it as actively as they can. I think. The biggest thing that they want cooperation with is from counties and cities with a police force to help them. We don't have that. We don't have that issue. So we're not, we're not gonna. We can't help, we can't hurt with a police force because we don't have a police force. Um. I know that our our sheriff has said he will follow state law. And which means won't actively try to help ICE. Um I mean, they they can't hinder them, but they can follow state law by not helping them. And again, I was in a conversation with other mayors with Representative Schreier and. What she asked for was tell us how these things are impacting your community, and that's what this does. It doesn't, we don't have, like you said, I mean, we don't have the power to do anything except express our concern. And that's what a resolution does.
I would say that. Also that the chief of police at Wenatchee also said they were not going to cooperate or aid ICE in finding, I mean, that they do have a police department, of course. And he stated that they weren't going to hinder or help, same thing. Um. I'd like to point out that especially on the Forest Service part, we have a nine million dollar grant stalled. For the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. That is providing five years of fuel reduction in the Chumstick and Lake Wenatchee area. So. Um I think it's real critical. Um I'm not. I'm real clear on what we need. I would certainly support this Forest Service resolution because. It is a huge impact. We can't even understand how big that is if they don't. First off, this thing should have showed up now, and in the way they're stalling it, it might not show up till August if it does. And so then it's useless, basically. So. Anyway, I wanted to point that out about the resolution for the Forest Service that, yeah, I would, we need to let them know what the impact is because it's huge.
Yeah, the fire is the one and the other is the back line, back line, um the the areas in the. Wilderness areas and stuff that they cut staffing down to.
Right.
Nothing, basically. So, you know, again, trying to manage the crowds that come with. So, yeah, there's. There's impacts. And like I said, I think I think the impacts are are strong in both of these areas. Uh strong enough to just say, hey. You know, this is, this is how it would impact, I mean.
Well, this resolution doesn't even speak to the cutting of federal grants for health, safety and economical being of of Lovinworth. And that's what you're speaking to, but the resolution doesn't talk about that.
No, as an example of what's happening, I mean, we could add that. I think that the other things they've got are legitimate as far as the staff cuts. That uh.
Well, you know, it's it's staffing in, and you're right, it's staffing and reduction in budgets.
Yeah.
And and.
And we're talking.
Happening the same.
We're talking about mitigating fire danger in this valley, and we're we're very vulnerable. And it makes no sense to take away that kind of that kind of money. Uh we've already got a plan to go with it, so. Uh whether we approve this or not, I would like to see that part in here in the resolution. I think it'd be a viable thing to.
You can add, we can add the the holding back of funding for those grants that were approved and. Yep, put that in.
Do we know if uh any of our neighboring cities like Cashmere, Wenatchee, Shalane, are they planning to pass? These types of resolutions although.
Other, I know of other communities. I don't know specifically if they're doing what they're doing with theirs. I know that. We have the largest workforce in our downtown of immigrants. Then, I mean, Cashmere, it's not near the downtown retail. Um Wenatchee's not, I mean, a lot of this, a lot of that's driven by our tourism, right?
Right.
And we are the strongest with that tourism dependency, so. Yeah, we rely much more heavily than those others do. I do know other cities in, there was conversations, I think, Lealum was one. And. I think Roslyn was another one in our mountain areas, but um. Yeah. Again, it's it's just being honest with what the impacts are to us.
I'm not comfortable passing a resolution that for this town that doesn't have a public hearing. Or that people don't have a chance to speak or ask questions, so um. I'm I'm not comfortable with it. I think there's there's things that maybe shouldn't be in here and um things that are missing. There's kick, there's some places are getting kickbacks. But I I think we're speaking for our community we haven't heard from, haven't had a chance to speak.
Well. It's a community that's driven by, I mean, again wildfires, we know. I mean, this is, this is taking, this is asking you to to represent, you know, um your community, not. Not take a. A pulse of where the wind is blowing or whatever, um it's asking you to say, hey, these are impacts.
Personally, I understand. I fully support the the Forest Service resolution. My concern with the welcoming city. Resolution if our elected representatives. Uh said that this would be helpful to them. I understand that. I just recognize that I am coming to this. Debate from an enormous place of privilege and that no matter what happens, ICE isn't coming for me. They can ask me to be repatriated to either Norway or Italy, that would be fine. Um. But ICE is not coming for me either way. I would not want to take an action that would have.
Uh. Unintended consequences that would make life harder for some of our community members. That is my concern.
Well, all I can tell you is that this was done in conversation with Hispanic. Members of the greater valley community and they are looking for this kind of, this is supporting them. This is not threatening them. This was this um immigration, um. Immigration justice, immigrant, I don't, I'm not going to get the. Out of Wenatchee that deals with uh immigrant community. Um, and legal issues and advising them and things. So I got models of. Of this resolution from them.
Right.
I think I'd feel more comfortable with this resolution if. If they had provided us. A written letter, something, some sort of guidance. To show that they would like assistance in this way. I mean, right now with the way that this. First resolution is written. I mean, it's basically restating a lot of rarity of what we have in the United States already. We already have paths for immigrants to get legal documentation in the United States. It's, it's a challenging path, but it's not non-existent.
It's.
And we're already a welcoming city. I'm not really sure why we need a resolution that says that. I mean, we don't, we don't show that we're unwelcoming. We have a, a huge hospitality. Network in our community. And. I mean, a lot of those folks live in my neighborhood. They don't, they're not unsafe. You know, they feel welcomed. They're a part of our community. They show up to a lot of our. Events, particularly our barbecue. I mean, they come, all of them come to our barbecue every year and they love interacting in those types of events.
You say every year, I think, I think again. To me, that what we show is white privilege is that we don't, we say there don't fear. There is a lot of fear in that community. I can tell you that right now. I do, I, like I said, I've been in contact with a number of organizations. Um. Molly Diego's who's done a lot for getting citizenship and, and pathways and stuff. You saw, we, we had a big. Gathering at our church on.
Right.
And the fear is real out there. People that. Are even legal, they're picking up. So. It's not and family members and all, it's. I think it's, it, to me, it is a big thing. And to me, there is a lot of threat and they're not, I think affirming that we're welcoming would be very. And like I said, this came from, and I know Wenatchee passed the welcoming, they didn't go as far as. I went with asking for them to put in more of a legal. Process because. I mean, you say we've got a legal process, but I know there's ones that have been here for. Twenty, thirty years. And haven't been able to get through that legal process. So. It's, it's a very difficult. Process and we have not had, I mean, I participated in an amnesty when I first came here in eighty-five, I think eighty-five, eighty-six. That was the first kind of blanket amnesty for all of the folks that were here and working. You know, without documentation and. That was basically the last time that we, we did anything that had. Um. Had a, had a way to get. To acknowledge workers that are here. Um, we've continued to need them. We've continued to use them. We've continued to have them. Um. But. But yeah, we turn, you know, we turn an eye when they're being picked up and taken away. And I, and I think there is a lot of fear. I mean, I hear it though.
Is it your job to argue with us?
Uh, no, I, I can give you my opinion.
And you have been for probably ten minutes. I mean, I, I'm just wondering, no matter what somebody says. You're, you have a battle going and I don't know that that's fair.
Well, I, 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 I think it's fair to, for me to express my concern for this community.
That's all you need.
I guess to provide a little bit more context to my comment about there are paths forward. I guess my hesitation with this resolution is that. The language kind of implies that there isn't already. And while I agree that the path could definitely be strengthened, that's not what this resolution says. The resolution implies that there isn't a process right now. It's asking the. House and the Senate to pass legislation that will provide a process that will allow immigrant workers a path to work here legally and. We have different paths. They're not super helpful, admittedly, but we have them. So I feel like the language isn't quite right. Uh, with the intent that you're coming forward with.
The.
And you're also speaking towards, you know. ICE coming into town and those sorts of things. This resolution doesn't speak to any of that either. So. I don't know. I guess, I guess it's, it feels, it feels less direct as to the actual intent. And so I'm, I'm struggling with. Where this is going.
And would you feel better if there was more like, had a process that was. Established to meet the need. You know, definitely, there's, there's existing ones, but if it was. An effective process that would allow. The need that's out there to be taken, you know, to be met somehow. Is that what you're gonna ask?
So just, you know, you talk about the legal process and there is one to get a temporary workforce up here. I don't remember the, the letter, any, the one.
It's H two, isn't it?
Yeah, one of those, you know, but. It's, it's, it doesn't deal with a, a long range.
Year round.
Year round workforce. For instance, if you needed them for a dairy, it wouldn't apply because it's only a temporary work visa. And they're so game expensive that I know an archivist who said he spends as much on legal fees to get through that process.
Hmm.
As he does on the workers. So. That's not an efficient system. That's not getting us a workforce in a way that doesn't. You know. That meets the need. And that's what we really need. Is a legal way. To meet the need for that workforce.
Sure. But again, that's not what the resolution tells.
Yeah, I would say it should be rewritten to, to where that's addressed. I mean, this is legit. I, the impact of. Losing these people is an impact, economic impact, not imagined, it's real.
Right.
And uh. More than we could even imagine. I just think Anne's got a point there that it needs to be more direct than what you're talking about as far as.
Whole point is to have somebody read it and for us to be heard. If, if they're reading the last three bullets of this resolution. They would immediately say, well, we already have that and just move right along. Do you know what I mean? We're not being really direct as to what we're asking for.
The, um. Yeah, and I, I would say that we're. For instance, the one that was passed by Wenatchee. Was basically stating just what you're saying is. We're already a welcoming place. They're just reaffirming it and they went ahead and just passed that. Like I said, I was trying to say, let's, let's go even further and we can, we can talk about that. We can, we can get more direct and, and quite frankly, I can get a. Couple of folks here to talk about what's happening in our alley.
That would be good.
Great.
Yeah.
And.
That's awesome. I, I would really like this to be locally influenced. I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah. We can do that. So we'll, we'll. We'll take that one off. I, are you ready to move forward, go with the? With the uh Forest Service?
I think the Forest Service one needed some additions to it as well.
Well, we could, we could add the loss of the. The grant funding.
Fire prevention grants.
Prevention grant funding and that could easily be added in, in the. You know, in amendment. And then get that one passed and out there.
It's more than just fire prevention grants that have gone away though, correct? And a lot of different.
There's a lot of, there's a lot, that's why I would say keep it general, just saying. The loss of funding and that's why it is just say sufficiently fund what's needed here. Um, because there are, there's, there's multiple things that are being cut. And I don't know that we know them all to list them all. But what we do know is that. The potential impact to us is significant.
Strongly opposes wholesale cuts to the United States Forest Service funding levels and work service workforce. That's. Right, says it.
Yeah.
Um.
Funding levels as well as workforce.
But I do think we're just talking workforce here. We're not mentioning, um. You know. I think it'd be wise to designate something specific as that. They have everybody in the whole, all the fire districts, the DNR, the. The county, Mike Caputa, all knows about this one. And I think that needs to be definitely itemized so it's, you know. Um. It's identified as part of our issue because it's very real.
Well, and like I said, we do mention our susceptibility to fire in the, and you know, all, all I'm saying, we can wordsmith it and you could add in something. But like I said, I've shared this with Erica. She, the only suggestion she had, she appreciated it was. You know, was to tell us now that there's more to come. We, we haven't seen the end of it.
Right.
And to add in the chief of the Forest Services, who this would go to as well.
I'm ready to vote for this as long as this gets decided by us.
Adding the grant.
Yeah.
Specific.
And specifics grant and, and others you could put.
And find other.
And other funding. Okay, and then we'll work at the other one and, and get representation here for, so if you can hear what's happening and.
I think it'd be very valuable and legitimate.
Sounds good. I do it. All right. Five minute break.
And did you make these?
No.
Hmm.
It gives us a second.
No.
You're all shook. You got, so you got to introduce them.
Meeting of the Lovinworth City Council for March twenty-fifth is called to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Shane, you want to start us?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Foot Strand.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Reister.
Shane Thayer.
Hey, we have identified a motion to excuse Councilmember McNastor and Bedard from this meeting.
To move. Second.
Moved. Moved by Shane, second invited Zeke. All those in favor, put your hands. Passes unanimously. Um, consent agenda. Motion to approve.
I want to approve the consent agenda.
Why are we, we're striking, um.
Uh, remove the, the order, yeah, the resolution.
We can remove it or we could just.
Yeah, we could just do a deal with it at the time and just remove it then.
Uh, I second.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Shane. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Comments from the public, I believe not on our agenda. Yes? Ron, come up and state your name.
Ron Duncan, two twenty-four Castgate Street. The uh. Upper Valley empty bowls artist bowls auction is currently ongoing. It ends tomorrow night at ten. Hasn't been a lot of bids on there and it is big fundraiser for Upper Valley bin. And the community covered food bank. So. It'd be uh awesome if everybody looked at the Upper Valley men's site and clicked the link to go to the auction site and. Saw what the bowls were doing. So just raising awareness.
Push them up.
Push them up. That's right. Not very high this year. It's kind of disappointing.
Which one are you bidding on?
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Others? No, I'm. I think somebody.
Nope, he'll be online.
You want to speak? Items not on the agenda? No?
I'm here for the resolution that concerns the federal.
Well, you, I thought you had another. Item though.
I'm gonna have you to sign a letter petition to.
So you're gonna do it during the discussion on that resolution? Okay.
So you think it's better I speak now?
No, that's fine. Hold your comments till then. It's related.
I would, uh, here, the range of attention by.
Right. So. This isn't specific to. A resolution?
I'm not sure.
Why don't, why don't you get, it's, it's, I think, a little bit different. So why don't you get up and tell us what you're asking?
Okay. I mean, so that's. I was here tonight to, uh. Bring your, to your attention, uh, mass filings. At the Research Center, actually. Research, the. Day that puts its all. By staff, which eleven. Researchers that were fired. There is a gap order on. So. Exploded how much information. It was out there, but. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the Research Center that built in. Nineteen thirteen has contributed to uh. To the development of CA storage, for example, Ranger Cherry, which I uh. I'm a, I'm a, I've done a cherry and apple dollar. Since the eighties. And my parents were cherry growers and my grandparents were apple growers up in South America, inside. I've benefited from the research from the station all my life. I, I've, I've seen. Many examples, we have many examples uh. Through my career as a, as, as a farmer. And uh, uh, I especially noticed the benefit of our research went out of the. Except. Group of other that was students, so they're union in eighty-nine. Just to see the difference in our technology, this or infrastructure, physical infrastructure, but the technology and how far we are ahead of them and then. Subsequent uh missions to China. And to uh. And to South America, the same thing. Occurred and, and, and for one thing, it makes you proud. As an American, like there to. To, to have that uh standing. The. And we get it to what could happen possibly with the, with the types of differences that we're due, that. That really the USDA and Washington State are tied together. The wall doesn't so much that. That, that one, one, the, the, that's one will affect the other. So that's another issue. And I don't think. We're gonna see. All. Uh. See what, fully what's going to happen and, you know, for the Bible and a few months up to several years, but it's gonna, I think it's gonna. Uh, give us, you know, take away our repetitiveness. For one thing, and we're facing these issues now. Also, you know, the. The, to uh our ability to adapt. When I just took a trip and I came home and my good fruit glower on the front, on the front cover was a. Uh, a photo of the, that's Potter landed fly, which is gonna be, uh, telling a little bit of children, you know. Uh, then I. Uh, then I noticed too that the city of caution had, uh. Had, uh, uh, recognized this facility down there, because they had a, a, a research facility there as well. And talked about the, the, uh, different, uh. Contributions they give to the city and to, uh, uh, the act of investment again. So, so, uh, uh, I think that it's important that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go to ask, I can, I can sign that, I think it's important that. Uh, 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 government or disaster, but you. And I think we give more voice to, to, to what's happening, I think that's, and that's what I'm here for. Exactly, as you asked the question, I mean, that's probably. Uh, one, one, okay, one other thing I should say that, that's been studied, that showed that every dollar with the best agriculture research. Uh, gives us back about twenty two hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a question for you, so you said twenty five employees were fired?
Well, I, 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 I understand now, this is researchers that are, that are, that are there, eleven. So there's fourteen remaining, and I think we're just saying the beginning.
Right.
Right, I mean, we really don't know.
Where it's gonna go.
There's not, it's, it's gone, health or scale, there is, there's no, there's no, uh, order to it, it's just. It seems like it's just made for, to try, try to give us chaos.
Right. So at this point, it's been eleven out of the twenty five researchers that are.
Correct, yeah, that's what, that's what information I got, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think the Northwest Horticultural Council, that's what I read, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, why, why is there a gag order?
I, oh, what?
You know what, why is there a gag order on, on the?
That's a good question, because why couldn't they talk about their jobs? And, you know, who they were and, um, and, and explain more to us. Someone doesn't want, want, want that to be part of the conversation, that's my speculation, at all.
Thank you for your time.
Put the gag load on.
Let's not, let's, we're not supposed to be. We're just supposed to be hearing on things that aren't on our agenda, so we appreciate your coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have something that's not on our agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, we got our public safety report, and first we'll get Randy Lake.
Evening, how are you?
In person.
I'll do it.
Hey, man.
Uh, I have hours. For January, February. Uh, nine hundred and thirty two hours in January with thirty foot patrol. Eight hundred and seventy two in February with twenty foot drill. I noticed this last weekend when I was up here and the weather was nice, there were a lot of people out. Going in the weather downtown, walking around, it's definitely starting to get busy for, uh, people walking around. And just getting a little busier downtown, there was a nice spell of the assault. We got first all second, and there was a couple of arrests made. Happened around eleven or twelve o'clock, I forget exactly the location I had once. This is what they pick up to, that's about the only significant thing I could think of, a saddle or something. That's still pretty slow. Yes, ma'am.
What is false reporting?
Uh. Uh. Some of the false reports I've had in the past, there's somebody trying to claim. That a collision happened in a different way than it was spoken. Just basically lying about the, what is happening. Thank you so much, you having, having some people.
Thanks.
Yeah, the questions? I don't see any. Let's keep it nice and calm, please.
It was just March Madness.
All right.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, good to see you.
Sir Mike.
So for us, we kind of, uh, have sprung into spring already. Uh, normally that would happen a little bit later, but we just don't have any snow, uh, so back to, uh. You know, regular tires on our U T B, getting out for E bikes, things like that. Uh, we're getting ready, we're gonna hire our fuels reduction crew, uh, before the end of the month. Uh, those grants are still frozen, but we kind of moved some things around with our internal budget, uh, so we're still gonna fulfill that crew kind of as planned. Uh, and if we get the grant back, we'll be poised to start that work, so we'll still be out there kind of either way. Uh, right now, we're beginning our yearly swimwater training. Uh, we're sending some few people to class and then we do our internal training for people who are not technicians. Uh, we're also integrating with, uh, Cascade Medical, uh. As far as making a coordinated rescue, uh, deployment plan between the two agencies. Uh, so we'll keep the E bikes, uh, snowmobiles and be sort of in charge of logistics and transportation. Uh, we'll get on there and then we'll figure out, you know, medics, E M Ts, who needs to go and, uh. Deploy from there, so there's a lot, there was a lot of redundant, snowmobiles, trailers, uh, rescue gear that we kind of just consolidated. Made more sense and it should be more effective. Uh, also, as far as training goes, we're working on our annual wildland refresher training and, uh, our new recruits are going through their initial, uh. Wildland training, and that'll end sometime in May, we do a live burn for all the new people and just to refresh our existing parrot brothers. Uh, and then also, uh, this is the time of year, there's a lot of people are gonna be headed out for advanced wildland forces to kind of offer sporadically throughout the state. Uh, so I think in May, I'm headed to Yakima for a few days. Uh, so far, we responded to one hundred and thirty three calls, it's down slightly from, uh, same time last year. Uh, we're still in the mean season, it's pretty normal for this time of year, it'd be a little bit slow. But, uh, basically next week or this week, I guess now, uh, when the temperatures pick up, I imagine that is beginning a lot of people here. Any questions for me?
Questions? Bye. All right, now we've got a presentation from an old friend, uh. Jason is gonna talk to us about the salmon lifecycle landscape.
Are you taking addresses?
Yeah.
We know where you live.
Jason London, Poland, five Ash Street, uh, thank you mayor and council and staff for having us tonight. Uh, this is my colleague at the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, Nicole Shepherd. She's the visitor service manager, she's been there about three years, and we've been working really closely on a project for about a year and a half together. It's a, a project that, um, I worked on in twenty twelve and then sat on the shelf for about a decade. And we picked it back up and re-ingegrated it, um, and you have a visual to show?
Which one were you doing?
The first one I sent you, the kind of overview. So I work for a nonprofit called Cascade Fisheries, and we do salmon half demonstration in North Central Washington and. Education with K three twelve, uh, fish dissection, salmon in the classroom, and field lessons, and we do a lot of that work with Nicole out at Hattory Creek. Uh, we're really excited about getting kids outside of. They love releasing fish, they love poking and cutting open salmon and, uh, building new goldfish. Most of our budget is half the administration, uh, of our five point seven million dollar budget, I'd say ninety percent of it is going to engineers and contractors. So, um, in twenty twelve, we got a little bit of money from the sleek and laddy high school fund. And trial limited, and we convened a group of partners and we developed this thing, it's like a salmon themed park down at the hatchery. Um. We're really excited to build a scaled down representation of the Columbia River Basin from Leavenworth out to the Pacific Ocean. And take visitors on a journey of the salmon's migration, and so, um. When Nicole came on, there was kind of a renewed interest, we got a grant to do this. This project and bringing together new partners, um, you have about a hundred thousand visitors at Hattory here, is that right? So we have a really captive audience out at Hattory and, um. I was sort of critical of Salmon Fest back in the day when it sounded like, I think it's been going on twenty five years now or something, but. Over thirty, okay, so the Salmon Fest, um, have, uh, warm water fish tanks, they have bass and pike. And then they have the archery and they have the raptors, they have all these great activities, they have little stations, but I wanted to bring salmon back, Salmon Fest. And, um, to reinforce sort of that desire. I would ask kids where salmon come from, and guess what they would say every time? You're, you're at the hatchery, they come from hatchery, salmon come from hatchery, like to me that was a really profound and sad thing. So we need to teach kids that salmon come from places like High School Creek and the Nash River and the White River and Basin Creek. So we, we came up with this concept, this is a new version of the concept, and I will walk you through it. Um, we got a hundred thousand dollar grant from Recreation Conservation Office at the end of twenty twenty three. Went through a hiring process to hire a landscape architect. Um, got the hatchery staff involved again, all the partners, many of them that were involved ten years ago. Are involved in now, and we kind of cast a broader net, so we have the museums up and down valley involved, W R I. And many others, Colville Tribes really involved, the Akleman Nation is very involved, we're reaching out to lower Columbia tribes. I know I'm skipping around, I should have prepared. This is about a six acre park, the Seaslaw North Road, um. Here is the, uh, the boat launches down here where bike tubes and the fishing platforms over here where the tribes fish. The main hatchery grounds, the main visitor centers over here, so this has been kind of a barren landscape, the hatchery did a big lit. Abatement project a few years ago, um, so it's kind of a blank canvas, there are some mature, um, ponderous pines on site. So it's a six acre park, a leva, and we have three entrances, we have one over by the boat. Put in and take out, and then we have where the, uh, deer rides are, where the sleigh rides are over here. And then we have more of a walking entrance, uh, Nicole takes a lot of her visitors on a tour of the grounds and the fishing. Platforms, and so we have this other entrance at the, you can hold in here, this out there. We have a perimeter trail for maintenance, so like small pickup truck to drive the perimeter trail. Then you have an extremely accessible trail that goes throughout, goes all the way around. And then you have the river, it's kind of hard to see, it's kind of blurry on the screen, but this is the Columbia River estuary. And then you come up through the Columbia Gorge and you get to this Collier basalt area, if any of you know of Slidow Falls. It was backwatered with, I was, uh, the Dallas Dam maybe, the Dallas Dam backwater Slidow Falls, it was a year round fishing dam. For indigenous people, and it was a hub of activity and trade for many tribes. So, uh, we're trying to match the geology and sort of the riverscape and the ecosystem from the coast. All the way up to the Cascade F tunnels, this is supposed to represent an agricultural area. Uh, we have a fire lookout, so we're really trying to build a scaled down version of where we are right now, all the way out to the Pacific Ocean. A lot of elements, a lot of layers, a lot of learning opportunities for all ages, from elderly to. Preschool, um. Lots of kiosks, lots of interpretation, uh, a lot of play features, a lot of tactile experiences, um. So we are gonna have a new version of this with more refinement and a cost estimate next month in April. And then we're gonna start fundraising, it's a very expensive project, uh. It would lend well to congressional direct spending from one of our congressional reps if they get that again. Uh, but yeah, we're gonna start really fundraising, the Leavenworth City Council passed the resolution supporting this project in twenty twelve or early twenty thirteen, I can't remember exactly. And we would like a letter of support or a resolution supporting this project again, the chamber is on board, the chamber's contributing five thousand dollars to kind of. Keep the momentum up after we finish this grant next month, but, uh, yeah, I'd ask you to consider a letter of support for this project. I think it'll benefit locals and visitors alike, and we want it to be complex enough where you would want to go back a little. It would be a one done thing, given there's, you know, many, there's not that much recreation enough for learning for kids here, a lot of our activities, you know. Are pretty extreme, involve life or death, and we want to provide, you know, visitor, um, opportunities that are. Uh, friendly to all ages and abilities, people, I'll take them up all there, what did I miss?
You summarized it really well, uh, I, just from the hatcheries perspective, um, we've been enjoying this partnership to. Develop the area to make it some place that the community can love, um. That area in particular, I'm sure a lot of you don't get a lot of like tubing traffic in the, the summer, uh, and that audience is not always the most. Considerate of the place that they're at, I think a project like this, uh. Bringing some love to that area that's very varied, um, will, will help us with. Reaching more people about the importance of taking care of our streams while they're recreating, uh, so we see it as like a dual use. Area, um, just to make it a better place for everyone.
I wish I had a list of all of our partners from Native Plant Society, I mean, we have such a huge list of layers, trial admitted, um. And just a bunch of P A members that are invested at this point, so we're pretty excited, um. We'll be fundraising the next year or two, uh, so that'll be interesting, a lot of requirements fills like a. Five million dollar project, six million dollar project, so not cheap. Uh, what else was I gonna say, oh, can you see a couple of other renderings, we just got a couple of renderings today to give you a feel. We'll have more next month, uh. Yeah, I sent Andrea two. Yeah.
When you should have built, not him.
When, right.
Um, funding to keep it running, are you gonna have a, a fee for it?
No, it would be free for sure.
Okay.
But we do, we do need to figure out long term funding and maintenance, because there would be a lot of plants that need help. We're hoping to have a docent, you know, that can show people around, um, so that'll be an agreement that we're working, you know, we're working something out. Who can take care of what, maybe the hatchery will take care of the irrigation, we're gonna use groundwater mostly to irrigate these plants from those abatement ponds. Uh, I think, yeah, so this is one of the covered gathering areas, there's a fire lookout. Ivan Hartley can see this, he came in at like four o'clock. But yeah, we're gonna have a lot of visual aids to help sell the project and give people feel the one blind mouth now. Want to show that off? And I didn't know how much time we had, or I didn't skip time on the agenda, hopefully we're not over it by the same. Any other questions?
I missed your name.
Mine?
Yeah.
Jason London.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I might have, yeah, might have. Yeah, it's just a different view of that placebo, there's gonna be like large wood and. Yes, there's a billion different little elements that we're gonna get into, we're kind of at like the five thousand level, five thousand foot level of planning. Uh, a lot of interpretation, we're hoping to get indigenous artists involved. Um, yeah, should be pretty beautiful, we'll, we'll invite you. Do a ribbon cutting sometime.
Yeah.
But thank you very much.
Jason, thanks, Jason.
Wow. Kinda good to be back. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, now we're ready to move into action items. Again, once again, we're reminded that we be respectful of each other, acknowledge it's okay to disagree. Um, you got comments to make, you gotta be recognized by the chair, you come forward, state your name and address. Uh, address the council as a whole, not individuals. Um, and keep your comments focused to the topic that's being discussed at that time. So we'll begin with resolution ordinance, action item number seven. Acceptance of the Waste Bar Collection and Treatment Facility Improvements Project Phase Three, and that's Wendy.
Uh, so this is just formalizing your acceptance of this work that was completed in twenty twenty four. Um, it is not typical that we have a solution for project acceptance, but it is required by U S D A, wrote on X hundred for this couple. Um. I think we've talked a lot about this project, but ultimately it's completed, from the front door, we concluded, uh, nine thousand milli feet of curative base paint throughout the city. That's by this project, and all the other, soliciting your right of assistance. Here are the other questions.
Here are the other questions.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Lubbock City Council moves to approve resolution zero seven twenty twenty five, acceptance of wastewater collection and treatment facility improvements project phase three, collection system.
Second. Move by one second, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand, passes unanimously. And now items eight and that's Andrea, that's uh. Transfer uh Zipley Fiber to B C E Holding.
Okay, this is super complicated, so I'm gonna try to make it super simple. Okay, so. Local Tel has a um. What's that called?
Franchise.
Franchise agreement with us. Local Tel was purchased by Zipley. And now Zipley is selling to B C E Holding. And so our original um. Franchise agreement will stay in place. But now they've. They've made a whole big thing about saying, you know, and now they'll have all this extra stuff to help them along, help Zipley fiber along. So anyway. Will still be Zipley Fiber, but it will just have a parent company or B C E Holding. I know, this is clear as mine, isn't it? So anyway, questions? Yes, Shane.
So this is just solidifying that. We're, that the contract that we already have in place is still good.
Yeah, yeah. It's still, yeah, it's still valid, um it's just changing hands multiple times.
Right. Is there a reason that we? Would think that they wouldn't honor the the original agreement, like even the?
I have no reason to think that they wouldn't.
Okay, I was just wondering why.
It says in all their um literature that they will keep. Our current franchise agreement in place.
Yeah, I was just curious why you're being asked to pass a resolution for it.
Because that's Zipley Fiber, or no, that's what B C E Holding asked me to do and I talked to Tom Grastra and he said, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So.
Just curious.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Lubbock City Council moves to approve resolution zero eight dash twenty twenty five. Transfer of control of Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC to B C E Holding Corporation.
Second.
Move by Clint, second by Shane, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. Passing unanimously. Right here. Um item nine, I believe we are going to set aside and bring back later at another time for your consideration. We will move then to ten, resolution ten twenty twenty five. Impacts to our local community with forest service. And then. We've talked about that some, if somebody. Want to make a motion and then we can look at. Doing an amendment or whatever you would choose to do. You know? Okay, well, if we don't hit it on the floor, I don't know that we've got something for you to talk about. Um.
I'll put it on the floor.
Okay.
Lubbock City Council moves to approve resolution ten twenty twenty five, impacts to our local community with forest service firing by the federal government.
We get a second. Well, yeah, guys for the lack of a second. So we should have had you get up when you had items that weren't on the agenda. Uh we'll move on to eleven.
We still have a conversation about this item though, without a motion on the floor.
Well, no, it takes a motion.
We can discuss the topic, we just don't.
Put a motion on the floor, then we can talk it and then. Postpone it or do whatever action, you don't have to pass it to put a motion on the floor.
Well, then I think it's, I think it's motion.
Okay. Move by Z, we get a, hold it, it's second by Shane to go ahead and put it on the floor. And do you want to talk before we get our guest here to talk?
I think what I'd like to see happen here is. We get this thing. With the, the money that's been delayed and and critically. In that amendment has to be stated that this is critically delaying. Fire protection for our city and our surrounding area. State the grant and the money and. Then I would bring it back. Same thing as. At our next meeting. That'd be my comment at this time.
Right?
So we actually see it.
Anybody else want to make? Comment before we open it up for?
I mean, I would, I would agree with what Deep said, I feel like we can tighten, tighten up the wording of the resolution. I'd like to see it brought back after that.
Right?
I think that. Uh the first, the first bullet after be it resolved, I think that. That needs to more so reflect. What's currently going on because. There will be rehiring of some of these federal employees. And we need to talk about. A little bit more, more specifically of what we're really expecting out of that. What, what do we want locally with regard to hiring? You know? Rather than strongly opposing the wholesale cuts that then are kind of just being flipped back. Encourage them to get moving on hiring those people, particularly those that impact rural communities like the city of Lubbock. Or ongoing management, fire protection. Preservation of our forests, I mean, we've got burns that can't happen, we have. We have forest management. Practices that our firefighters do when they're not on fires, none of that's gonna be happening until we get our our. Our employees back in the area and I think that that's where some of the stronger language needs to be directed.
Just recognize too that as we've seen with multiple areas, you're gonna see one that comes back in two weeks. And the specifics will change between that time and the next week to follow it um.
It's possible, it's definitely a big target right now.
This is a moving target, right? I mean, and you, you mentioned that the the hiring back and they've, they've been ordered to hire back. But then they've been told that that's temporary situation, so. Uh again, this is very fluid and. You're not, you're not gonna be able to nail it down.
You know, we can't quite nail it down, but I think there's more to be said, I think there's, there's more explicit issues that. Highlight the salient points that this is a, to point that general, I think. I think myself as a council member would feel more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, and we can get some, some very specific um concerns like. The. Whatever six thousand tons of poop. That won't get approved. Um.
Sounds good.
Yeah, right?
Well, yeah, there's nobody to fly them into the enchantments.
Yeah, that's exactly, to bring it up, I mean, that's and and that again means water quality issues. That could impact our water, so. Like is that, we, we can get specific, those are specific concerns. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen now and then. But we can list those specifics. And you've got something that you'd like to bring up along these lines, why, why don't you come up and? Again, state your name and address and. Share what you'd like to share.
My name's Russ Truman, I live in Winachi. Um I spoke with you, it was two weeks ago. And during that time I outlined some of the things that were going on in the previous month. Um. Since that time. The probationary employees have been reinstated. Initially, they were put into an administrative um leave category, some of whom are still in that, some of whom are. That's a temporary thing. Yesterday, the administration appealed to the Supreme Court to vacate the court rulings that required them. To rehire one's probationary employee, so we don't know how that's gonna turn. By March thirteenth. All the agencies in the federal government had to submit the Office of Personnel Management. Their list of. Who are essential employees? And those to the definitions of what's an essential employee was given to them by O P M. And no one knows what that definition is. It could be that the district ranger is not on that list, it could be um that the leader of the Hatchery. Was on that list, it, it could be anything between, we don't know. We do know that the chief of the Forest Service is dead of fire protection, timber management, recreational law enforcement. Are just priorities over the next few years. It is fluid like we've talked about and I really commend you for bringing up the resolution that you. Have on the table right now, I think there are some things in there that are very poignant. The water quality, the impacts to local and your community, it's really poignant. However, you decide to go on that. I would like you to, in addition. Sign on to a letter that we're circulating. That would go to Schreier, Representative Schreier and the two senators. And in that letter, it asks them to speak out and support of federal employees and in particular. The federal employees that have been terminated so far. Um speak out about the administration's efforts to downsize. Uh and reduce the workforce in the federal government. And demand. That state local governments be consulted. In that process, it feels like they did in the Clinton administration with the new vending government. The local and state governments got a chance to stay well within their mind. Doesn't mean that the federal government is gonna take everything that you suggest and adopt it. But it'll give you a better idea of what the impacts are gonna be. And you may give them some ideas that they didn't think. As far as we know, no one on the Winachi National Forest has any idea. Of what. The city of O P M right now, what their current organization, but what their future organizations going on at the time. Um and. We have no idea when anyone's gonna find out what that's gonna look like. It could be that we find out when employees start getting termination of the city. After the the early retirement opportunities and buyout opportunities and things like that. Um. And then the third thing that this letter asks for, that those three individuals. Demand that the Secretary of Agriculture and Secretary of Interior outline the impacts to local communities, whether it's ecological. Whether it's economical, social, or or impacts to the tribes, that those folks come back and do them. By signing on this letter, you will be joining. Recreation and conservation organizations in the valley within um Representative Schreier's district. That have already signed on to this. There, at the same time, there's a concurrent letter that we're working on getting signatures for. Um um specifically from people and organizations within Representative Newhouse. Next week, we're going to the back out valley to see if we can go. Get folks to sign on with us and. Um I urge you to consider this letter. Um anytime you have questions, comments, feel free to contact me, my contact information is on the.
I need the one.
What's the one?
It's why people staple together.
Oh.
It's why people staple together, outline the actions that have occurred. That we know them, that outlines the impacts to the residents of the north central Washington. And um then ask the representative and the two senators to take specific action. So whatever revolution you end up passing or not having. And I would love it if you would sign on and join with these other organizations, like Tread, the Evergreen, Mount Bike Association. Um groups like that will help people.
Russ, how do we reconnect with you as far as this letter?
Um my contact.
Yeah, I see that.
That is, but phone, email. Um it's fine, okay, twenty four, oh, not twenty four.
Right.
Close.
Um are you just doing groups or are you doing individuals? How do, how are you, are, so when you say Tread, was it just their board that signed on?
It's their board, Evergreen, it's the Central Washington chapter.
Right.
Um will. Caspian's board will likely sign on.
So that's, that's the, the gist of it is though that you're looking for organizational support versus individual.
Yes.
Cause I've got another one that I'm gonna lay on them that's for them to sign as individuals.
Who's they?
You, that's gonna come in my time when I get to, you got something else to. But um yeah, okay, that's helpful.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for bringing this up, Russ.
Thanks.
Come on.
DJ Robinson, one two six Commercial Street, and. And look at this at a map level, I can totally read. That's very good, let's pause. We need to have teeth, see, try to try to say the same thing, I don't set especially, we need to have teeth in this thing. And I'm gonna relate it to the same resolution that you had last week or two weeks ago for Ashland County. And I'm gonna do it this way. We asked in that uh in that resolution, in my paper statement, we need to say, hey, we just want to follow the rules, whatever the rules are, follow. Okay, not tell them how to rule. Not trying to do anything like that, but you know what, this is what the code says, this is what the law says. And we have an opportunity here to do the same thing. And I appreciate the resolutions that I see, and I understand the upwitness sentiment behind it and everything. But to have teeth in it, we have eight lawsuits right now that the state of Washington has. With multiple states attorney general that they're winning right now. And so it's not saying you have to join in on those lawsuits. But what you can do is put the resolution that supports lawsuits, because it doesn't talk about just federal funding for the forestry. And it doesn't just talk about birthright citizenship, which is part of the whole thing that happens. It talks about federal funding for the uh school, the first schools, Department of Education, which is a huge consideration. It talks about the federal funding for uh my, maybe you should talk about the salmon thing and we, the fire chief just was in here. And he talked about how that granted me. And so it, it lies into every single one of them, so design the resolution around that that says, hey, this is what they're saying. And this is how it affects our community within the state of Washington, which we are not just saying. We have a rule, there are, that's our elected officials as well, I agree, Ken Struck, I agree with our councilwoman and our state senator, that's fine, I mean, our federal senators. That's fine, but we know they're also limited. But just like you said, you want to, is it worth? Well lawsuits, the lawsuits are showing this work, but the reason that we have employees coming back right now are because of the lawsuits. Okay, and yes, it's gonna go back forth, we're not sure where it's gonna go, but those lawsuits are going and going forward. And then you have a potential, because I think you talked about, for when you do a resolution, you don't just throw a resolution out there, you want to have that legal footing. To say, hey, if I need to join in a lawsuit maker, and then we have a potential of the city to do that too, to have filing an amicus brief in these lawsuits. For the state attorney general, who is our elected rep, we elect him as, he's part of our communities as well, we elect him. And they're saying, hey. And they're saying, hey, these are wrong, and they're, they've already been, they've been out there. And they're winning them. And so it's not just something we're throwing out. And yes, it's a risk. But you know what? We're going on, we're going with that risk with twenty two other states or seven other states or fourteen other states. And though they're small cities and they're small towns, because what they're saying, the states are saying, it's not gonna affect just the state. It's affecting our small towns. It's affecting these things. And so we say, hey, this is where it's at. This is how it affects, not just us with the forest tree, but how does it affect our schools right now? How does it affect our cascade medical? How does it affect all of these parts? What the Washington, uh, Wenatchee Immigration Justice is what you're referring to. Okay, they're, they're not part of the lawsuits, but the Northwest Immigration uh Project is part of those lawsuits with the state attorney general. So they're already part of, that's who we'll, we'll listen to. We'll partner with Wenatchee uh Valley College and the issue to happy. Let's have the actual discussion. I'm saying do it right away. And I understand the kind of impetus behind it, uh, Carl. I completely understand that. But let's have some teeth in it. Let's say this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna stand on business. If we're willing to stand on business with our neighbors in Shalane and say, hey, all I want you to do is follow your code. Don't, we're not telling you what the code looks like. And I think you still, we still need to be able to do that and do it in partnership and in good faith with them, like we spoke about before. But we're gonna stand up. Let's stand up. Let's do that. And let's have the discussion, and like, and like Sharon, you said, let's have the community have that discussion about it. And not about this and that and this. They have to be come here and talk to you about how it is going to affect them. Let's listen to it and put that in the resolution as long as it matches with every lawsuit that we have out there. We're not going off on our own. We're not gonna be, it's not just us standing on our own and risking every, we're standing with the state of Washington. We're standing with the community. That's all I'm asking. Just think of it that way. I'm not saying vote on anything at all. I'm glad you pulled it back. But that's when you're, when we're coming up with it, put teeth in. Thank you.
Thanks, D J. Anybody else?
All right, excuse me, are you kicking something under there?
No, it's just my chair squeaking.
Does that say squeak?
All right. Um, we uh will. Uh, we wanna do it, yeah, we got it on the table. Do you wanna make a motion to postpone it? You wanna just vote it down? What do you wanna do? Wanna take a vote?
I would make a most, can I make a motion for that?
Make a motion.
So I'd make a motion that we postponed it with revisions that we have identified tonight, more specific issues.
So you're amending your original motion?
Yes. So I, that's the word I need to use.
Yeah.
I'm amending my original motion in that we bring this back our next meeting with specific items that we have identified here uh and readdressed, readdressed the resolution.
Okay, you'll second it. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously, we'll bring that one back. Uh, action item eleven, water transmission main replacement. Andy.
Uh, so this is the renewed water completion replacement project. Um, that means we've renewed and we actually got better bids, uh, and I think more bids. Yeah, I think last time we had six bids and this, we had eight better bidders. So H Con Incorporated, a few of those are those responsive bidder, um, at five point three eight million dollars. I believe the last motion you brought to you is five point, or the low bidder when we rejected bids was five five. Um, so staff is recommending awarding to H Con, uh, they were a responsive and responsible bidder. We have also worked with them previously, they did our uh High Street Emergency Water Management replacing.
And you got some good, strong kudos from some folks over there, I know. Appreciate their work. So, um, yeah, and nobody's contesting. All right, I would entertain a vote.
The Little River City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with H Con Incorporated for the water transmission main replacement wellsite to Mill Street project in the amount of five million, three hundred eighty thousand, one hundred thirty six dollars and thirty four cents, including Washington State sales tax.
Second.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions, comments, anybody? All right, all those in favor, the civilian, the unanimous agreement. Yeah, supplemental agreement two, two Pacific Security Professional Services Agreement. Plan it. Sorry to make you stay the whole night.
Hi, council staff. Um, hi, the council is asked, is being asked to approve the supplemental agreement number two to enforcing enforcement contract with Pacific Security. This amendment will increase the contract at thirty five thousand eight hundred, but then you now receive agreement of one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirty nine. This is exclusively to get us through their problem, which is April, the end of it. We have hired two new people. I already have one at the start. We've decreased Pacific Security already from the five to six days a week that they were helping with, to two. Uh, I do not anticipate that they're going to be very favorable to a two day a week. I would like to use them as control, but I will not see if we can come back and ask for any sort of.
How many people uh do you have in enforcement right now?
Right now, there's five total, we're speaking, including me.
Okay, and is our social uh, or missing security company in there too, or?
No.
No, just?
Yeah.
Okay.
As of the thirty first March, there will, we will onboard our, our last team member that we were adding yet to. So that will add two to Joe instead. So that's four, twelve reinforcements. All of us can do enforcement. We're all completely trained. But I hold myself firm to practicing through. This will allow me to be able to not run all over town, but perhaps in supervising.
Shannon, can you clarify then the issue you had with uh Pacific Security, Pacific Security? If they're only here for two days, that they're just gonna drop their contract or?
Um, they, they are expressing, and they have not come to me directly, but they are expressing that it would be very, very difficult to get a person to commit to create. One of the things that I require is having something who deals standard. Otherwise, we're constantly retraining. We don't get that level of customer service that we require.
So does that leave us in the lurch or is that, is that not an impactor?
No, we definitely want it to go.
Okay.
We have, we have two people on staff, seven days.
Okay.
Some of the times when we're busy, we have three people for the weekends. On our busy times, when it's very busy, the rigid lights, then we'll all be out here doing it.
So there's no need for Pacific Security after we get these guys up?
Yes, no, they're not, not in my opinion, but I would like to not cut up my nose despite my face and at least leave a little push if they're willing to work with us if we get an insane teeth. Um, we will be working with them in patrol aspect. I am exclusively talking about parking enforcement.
Enforcement.
And those guys are trained, they're specialized, uh, to their patrol, who are very well in counter patrol through streets, helping us with lots of doing, uh, having somebody there so the rest of them, and those kind of. So we are not gonna get away from them.
Right.
We're just going to shift our views of them away from parking enforcement.
Got it.
More towards uh patrol.
True.
Are there any changes to the pool parking lot this summer from last year?
Um, changes when the pool opens?
Yes.
No, it will be the same as last year.
Thanks.
I would give a motion.
City of, the Little River City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number two with Pacific Security for parking enforcement in the amount of thirty five thousand eight hundred dollars with a new not to exceed amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty nine dollars and twenty four cents.
Second.
By Sharon, seconded by, any other questions? Yeah, yes, you wanna come up?
Push her out of the way.
Yeah, I'll face this way about my question. Ron Dunkin two twenty four, State Street. The uh parking enforcement, is this strictly for uh city revenue or is it through the neighborhoods for parking that is uh uh doesn't make the city money? I mean, like parking on sidewalks and, which is happening all over, parking overnight during snow removal times, which happened all winter. It didn't seem like there was anything being done in the series. Are we not covering that?
Yes, we are. Actually, we have staff that comes in early in the morning to make sure that we don't have um a lot of vehicles on onsite for what you're talking about, the work of the workforce, and maybe sure they let us know there's any areas to look at. Um, as far as we have the residential meter, but yes, we're working out there, especially when the spot on people are uh moving a lot of cars to me. Um, part of where enforcement will be useful is if we can develop some residential zones, then we can come out and enforce them as well. But do we enforce out in the limits of city?
So patrol actually drives by when they see a car parked on the sidewalk, they do something?
Yeah, they get out that way. Yes. We don't go out into the neighborhood often. We have some parking concerns. We are much trouble to recall. And so that can also, that we can service that area in a faster.
Thank you.
Any, any other question?
I have a quick question, just to clarify. So this is actually an existing contract, excuse me, that started in May of twenty twenty four and expires in April of twenty twenty five. I did look at your numbers today.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously, cue. Action.
Action.
Action. Action thirteen. Engineering, uh, R H two, but the K O A lift station improvements, Andy.
Yeah, uh, so task authorization with R H two engineering to design improvements to the K O A lift station. Um, this is something that has been identified and has been on our C I P. We are finally getting to it this year. Um, the major improvements here include replacing a failed generator, installing an autodiler uh for remote alarm monitoring, and then adding in a bus straight junction box to prevent water. Uh, in addition, the K O A itself uh historically has been charged based off pump runtime, when they were the only sewer customer in that area contributing to the lift station. So the K O A campground has uh a dump site, so their water usage did not directly force on to their sewer like we can do with a lot of customers. So there is a specific agreement with the K O A that they're charged based off their actual sewer usage. Uh, while they were the only customers in that area contributing to the lift station, they were being charged based off pump runtime, which is unconverted revolving. They were charged for that usage. Uh, because there are no other developments in the area that are contributing to that lift station, we don't have an accurate estimate of how much they would see where they're discharging to us. So this also includes uh putting a partial flume in a manhole to measure the amount of flow coming from the K O A, so we can accurately charge them. But that's also important, that must happen. Can I add, and I'm here if you have any other questions?
Is the new La Quinta Hotel also contributing? Are they part of the system?
They will be contributing both to the station.
So any, anything, I walked out there just to see what's going on. So you've got the hotel, the new hotel, climbing gym, springs, and K O A.
Eleven or costs.
Eleven or costs, which is huge.
Yeah.
All part of this system.
Hey, I would give a good motion.
Little River City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute task authorization number three under the twenty twenty five On Call Utility Engineering Professional Services Agreement with R H two Engineering Incorporated for the K O A Lift Station Improvements Project with a not to exceed amount of seventy three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Zeke. Other questions?
Andy, have we talked to R H two about their capacity to meet the scheduling requirements?
Yeah, I think so. This is a hundred and fifty days, and that came directly from them.
It did come from them?
Yes.
Okay. They're very busy. Did you finish a lot of work on them? They're very busy.
That's all she's gonna say.
Not just, not just with, not just with like, they're busy with a lot of different projects.
Right.
But they also have a bottleneck, so that was just why I was asking.
I think that's kind of good. Most engineering firms, it looks like. But anyway.
They, they have a hundred and fifty days themselves, so I didn't spend the.
Right.
The best I can.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passing unanimously. All right, so a memorandum of understanding between the city and Keensters Local seven sixty.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, so our health insurance provider is the Inland Empire Teamsters Trust. And they, in the year of twenty twenty two, conducted audit um of all the city's employees. And they discovered that we have two twenty four hour, year round employees who are, who are not receiving um health medical benefits. And it was our understanding and the union's understanding that these part time employees were not meant to be covered by the C B A. They were not union employees. Um, and nothing in the C B A reflected prorated benefits for part, part time uh employees. So what this um, so what the trust did was they not only sent us um, they sent us a bill in January after we con closed, or after we completed bargaining. It was a bill for over twenty one thousand dollars. It included fifteen thousand dollars for two employees' health insurance premiums for a period of seven months in the year of twenty twenty two, during which they were never benefit, they're never, they never received the benefit of having health insurance uh as well as uh three thousand dollars liquidated damages and then the cost of the audit itself. Um, this obviously gave me pause, didn't want to pay the bill, reached out to our city attorney, ended up working with them and the union. So what this M O U does is clarifies the understanding between both the union and the city that these part time, year round employees were never meant to be covered by the collective bargaining agreement. And before I ask you guys to approve the, the actual red line version of the C B A, we want to make sure that this is abundantly clear in the twenty five through twenty eight C B A that these positions are not covered by the agreement.
They're not covered, coming up.
Correct.
Right.
Well, they are never intended to. For us talking about that.
Yeah, and one of the issues was that the term employee was uh defined including part timers. But then the part time positions that we employ were not listed among the positions covered. Not only that, but there's provisions in the art, in the bargaining agreement that say that we can only have or part, or part time public works employees at a given time, and that these part time employees should not be used to displace union members. So there's so, there are so many things in the agreement that indicated that they weren't meant to be covered, but Teamsters Trust just disagreed with us. Um, so.
There was an inconsistency.
Yeah, so this M O U will clarify that and hopefully get us out of that one when the Teamsters gets through.
And that just gives you, if they, if this goes, I don't know if it's gonna go to court, but anyway, the M O U would definitely clarify and give you a supportive factor.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Right, and I mean, the biggest support is that it's an M O U between us and the union both agree.
Right.
This was never, so.
Pretty powerful.
It's not, yeah, it's not just the city saying, we.
Right.
Think so.
Right, right.
Did the health insurance provider ever reach out before they just sent you a bill? Did the health insurance provider ever reach out before they just sent you a bill?
No, no.
Cause it seems very odd that they would reach out to both the city and.
The union.
First.
Yeah, they reached out to us and we said, no, these aren't supposed to be covered. Then they reached out to the union, they didn't get the, our business rep, they apparently got the Yakima office who pulled up a collect, who called up, pulled up a copy of the C B A and says, oh yeah, no, these part-time employees are, are supposed to be included. So that's what they took um um as face value and then they sent us the bill and uh so we started disputing it and this is where we are.
So are those two part-time employees still employed?
Yes.
Okay, are, are they having issues or a problem or?
No, no, no problem with the employees, just the fact that we're, they were never meant to be receiving health insurance benefits and more to the point, I don't want to pay the Teamsters Trust for health insurance benefits that employees never benefited from.
Yeah, they never got. So are these part employees or so?
Yeah.
Okay. So they don't work, their, their time, they don't work as in the winter?
No, no, they're year-round.
They're year-round, they just only work twenty-four hours.
They were, they were, they were four-six hour shifts.
Okay.
Hey. Any other questions?
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between the city of Leavenworth and Teamsters local union number seven six zero.
Second. By, seconded by Clint. Other questions? Seeing none, all's in favor, let me see your hands, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, change order number four, Front Street Restrooms and Stairway Expansion, Andy.
Uh well, the first thing I just realized almost is it's actually change order number five. I apologize, um. But this is a change order for six different changes that are somewhere in your pocket. Uh additional paperwork, heat kit substitution, uh scrollwork, fascia, uh the restroom parapet. Based detail for some, some support, C M E wall, stair wall, and emergency lighting and everything. So a whole slew of changes that are all combined into one change order here, which totals um the over sorry, sixty-eight thousand dollars, including Washington State sales tax. Um I did want to touch on the fact that it is change order number five, the other change orders have all been small enough that per purchasing general policy, we're able to just sign off on without bringing a council. So um with the other five, or the four, between the total base and calculate, the other four total to sixty-three thousand dollars, complete uh for other change orders. And those items included replacement of exterior doors that were coming into use, overexamination of unsealable materials. Um a storm line relocation that conflicted with the flooding and then uh changing, so we're, we're adding heated concrete, concrete restaurants, help with snow. And then of course, so. Change order, yes.
So Andy, these, these change orders, they weren't uh originally recognized in the initial scope of the project? That's why we're having to do these change orders, correct?
Correct, yeah, these are all things that have changed during the project.
Is that pretty normal?
Yeah, basically, the dollar under this contract, um I'm kind of running up one minute, I think this is one point, um one point nine million dollar budget, so in terms of percent change, we're clear.
We're, we within the um original budget and contingency.
So we're over-regarded for this project, just because we have a lot of incidentals going on, I E. register rentals. But right now we're sitting with uh one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, but this contract only has about six hundred or six hundred and fifty thousand remaining on it. You want to keep this on my budget amendment?
Is this all watching tabs?
Yes.
Yeah, all of it. Hundred percent.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah. You're starting to see something now.
You know, it's coming together.
All right.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute change order number five to the Front Street Restrooms and Stairway Expansion Project in the amount of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents, including Washington State sales tax.
Second.
By Sharon, second by Sharon, any other comments? All those in favor, let me see your hands, passing unanimously. All right, that is our action items. Now council report, Sharon.
Okay, um, excuse me. March twelfth, I attended the Women's Exchange Luncheon. Our speaker was a nutritionist from Cascade Hospital. Her presentation was really, really good. We all learned about combinations of the credit food to snack on. I've put together for the best health results and how valuable your health is key, the fiber plays. Uh the Schlan Douglas Health District is on March seventeenth. We're in the process of going through the rules and procedures, roles and responsibilities, interactions, respect and decorum, and code of ethics, which was quite a lengthy discussion and is to be continued. Our meeting will continue on the third Monday of each month at a new time, two P M. And in a different place at the Douglas County Services Building. March eighteenth, I attended the uh United Methodist Church Free Dinner, which happens the third Tuesday of each month between five and seven. You guys should come, come on over and visit sometimes. There's a lot of people there to meet and talk to and the meals are excellent. March twentieth, I went to the East Willachy Senior Center to have my taxes taken, which are free of charge to A A R P for anybody in the room that's fifty or older. Um uh March twenty-fifth, the downtown steering committee will be Selby's report. I got there today just in time to uh end the meeting. Um reminder, on April thirtieth, the Chumpstick Wildfire Stewardship Coalition will be hosting a town meeting at the Sleepy Owl featuring Dr. Paul Hesper. Is this a relation?
Where's my dad?
Is that your dad? How fun, okay.
What's he doing?
You will be there. So it's on the thirtieth and it's at this, is it Sleepy Owl?
Snowy Owl.
No, you know what I kept thinking? But I thought I'll just put sleepy owl anyway. Okay, um and Dr. Paul Hesper will be sharing his expertise on wildfire resilience and landscape management. You know, um the Chumpstick Wildfire uh Steering Committee has had more than one wildfire meeting out at snowy lady, snowy owl.
Snowy lady, she's still smelling right now.
Yeah, for a little bit. And you know, there's not a big crowd comes. And I don't know why, because their, their presentations are fabulous and thereby, you know, well-respected people. The one was one of the head guys in the Paradise Fire. It was fascinating and we heard actual, um you know, telephone conversations and everything, so uh I think we need to support these things, you guys. And um we did uh uh I'm gonna pass out something for everybody, it's in the speaker lineup. And um this is from the um meeting, the um Land of the Health Department meeting. I should, I thought these were stapled, I see the little.
This is the original.
Okay.
I don't know what I did.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. For your information. Did everybody get one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Thanks for listening.
All right.
Sharon's, Sharon's amazing, moving on. What about us? And you all are amazing too.
Yeah.
Uh on March eighteenth, I attended the Link Transit Board Meeting. Um we are going to be changing our location of our board meeting for April because we're going to be holding it at the other Link Transit, the actual Link Transit um north campus, where all the buses are actually stored, because the bus garage, the new bus garage construction is nearing completion. And so we'll get to wander around and see the new campus and the new maintenance space and that sort of thing, so that's gonna be kind of fun. Um and that will be on Tuesday, April fifteenth. Uh Leavenworth continues to be the leader in boardings for Link Transit. Uh with commuters from Willachy to Leavenworth, as well as uh our one-twenty-two express bus that takes people all the way to the hospital and then our shuttle is a big hit here in town. Uh ridership all across Link Transit was down in the month of February. Uh that's because we didn't have a lot of major holidays and the weather's been kind of okay, so, uh but all in all, Leavenworth is still leading the charge on boardings. Um also. Um on the twentieth, we had our parking advisory meeting and um we were down a little bit in ticket revenue. Um I think there had been a, a question earlier about enforcement tickets and we continue to drop just a little bit in ticket revenue, um which we think is really great because locals and tourists are learning how to use our parking systems and so we're seeing a lot fewer violations overall, which is which is really what we want. We don't want to be giving out major amounts of parking tickets to locals and community members. And I think a lot of that can be attributed to removing the parking meters and putting in the kiosks. They're so much more user-friendly. Um and we have been increasing our signage and making it a lot more understandable um over the course of the last couple of months too. You'll see a lot of new signage downtown uh marking, more clearly marking the thirty-minute parking areas. Eighty-eight parking is better designated, those sorts of things. So a lot of those updates the parking division has been doing over the last couple of months and it was looks great, getting ready for our influx of tourism that will be coming this spring and summer. Um we had a really cool uh lot sensor update from Shannon in the Parking Committee meeting where she showed us the lot, the real-time occupancy mapping that is available from our overhead uh sensor readers. Um and it's really cool because it, it shows on this map every single parking stall within the area that it is monitoring. And it shows you in real time which of those stalls are open and which ones are, have cars in them. And it's really cool because this is cutting down on our enforcement staff having to go out and control and check every single lot and every single stall that they manage, because now they can see in real time where stalls are filled, how long cars have been there, whether or not they, they're overtime, those sorts of things, so the new lot sensors are, are really working out well for our parking staff. Uh Shannon mentioned we have two enforcement officers coming on. And uh we went through, um we had a discussion about our parking garage feasibility and um Selby presented us with a R F Q draft uh that we worked through and um made some suggestions to language and that's going to be coming back. And then um that will actually formally go out this spring. Um a request for qualifications to um have consultants apply for and be uh be our consultant on feasibility study and um with, with a secondary phase associated with it, um that would be design and engineering associated with parking garage once uh the feasibility study is done of picking, picking an appropriate location. We already think that we have a very viable location, but having, having a consultant and, and professional in that field make that determination for us will, will be good data for us to have.
I thought the DART, you called them up and you needed to go to Save Mart or something and the DART would take you there. But I understand the DART doesn't go out of town.
Right, it'll take you to the, to the bus that you can catch to go down to Save One.
Yeah, the DART, the DART is just uh some localized expansive services to connect you with services that already exist.
Did they ever do that?
No.
Okay.
No, no, they don't run like a taxi shuttle. Alright, that's all of that.
Okay. Um on March eighteenth, I attended um the Upper Valley Historical Society. Um let me tell you, these are two-hour commitments, because they don't go short, they usually go long anyway. So I didn't know that when I signed up. Too late now.
You can encourage them to be efficient, Zeke.
I'm talking to Christie, so I. Anyway, um good meeting, they had quite a, the very walking tours has really expanded where they take people all over town. They got six different walking tours, wine tours, brewery tours, you know, historical tours. Anyway, they want to uh, they suggested to the board that they would like to work with um an arrangement where they give so much money, each person pays so much money to the museum and also gets in for discounted price. So anyway, they're working out this whole thing of, of uh an arrangement between the walking tours, these two people and the museum itself, so gets more people in the museum, gives the um, the walking tours a little more notoriety, so that's uh one thing we talked a lot about. Um we are, they're fundraising, they have a grant application with mostly with T-Mobile for uh chairs and audiovisual equipment for the Grange. As they're moving toward a contract to lease the Grange. There, um that should be, so Matt Cade is the one that's uh in charge of that. And they should have something by the end of this month, I believe, or the end of April. So they're working hard on getting at least done with the Grange organization itself. And the, they noticed that the attendance at the museum is down year-to-date. Um I think February is just one of those months and also the uh noticeable lack of Canadians coming into Leavenworth. This time, so. Um that's the report for uh museum. I also had the pleasure and opportunity to testify for bill fifty-five seventy-six that four percent tax on S T Rs um via Zoom to the uh Finance Committee. Um and today's meeting with the downtown, I'll just touch on a lightly, I'll let um Selby take the rest of it. We had a presentation by Peter James, who has the art gallery above the Yodel Inn. He would like to see a parklet right across in that parking lot. Um he presented a very thorough presentation of adding bench and greenery uh to bring people up there, give people a place to sit down after they've walked all that way. And it just take away that industrial look of that parking lot. So a lot of win-win there. Um and so we talked that through, uh Troy had a lot of comments and so did Kevin and so and hope so did the whole committee, so very positive presentation. Um but we're still working, just getting through some channels, so I'll leave it at that and that's the end of my report.
Bye.
Okay. On March thirteenth, I attended the P R S A Board Meeting. Um Andy gave us all an update on where we're at with the pool maintenance. Um uh she talked about um they're still working on the zero entry and um replacing the filters, correct? Yeah, and uh retiring is it retiring the bathroom floors? Right, that's right, right, yeah.
You're on, I'm impressed.
I tried to take good notes. Kara Rafter, Raftery gave us um kind of a brief overview of the, the new rec desk uh electronic tracking system that they'll be implementing uh at the pool. It will basically help um uh membership with, they'll be given a, assigned like key fobs and um it will be like a whole online uh registration system that can register for swim classes. It's a really cool system and it's gonna be um kind of split or shared costs with, with other city staff. It'll be using it also, so the, the P R S A is not gonna have to front the whole bill for this, for the system. See what else am I missing? I think that's it, my report.
Okay, just a couple of quick things for me, that. Bill fifty-five seventy-six, the four percent tax will get a Finance Committee vote. On Thursday of this week. Um, and that's good news because. It's not the end of the session, there's still thirty days left after that, so. The good news is it's not gonna be one of those, last year, we got it all the way through the Finance Committee. But it was clogged up at that final. Days of a short session and a filibuster that. Didn't allow it to come to a vote, but they're moving it through quicker, so that two things, one is. They took away the filibuster option, and the second thing is they hope to get it out on the floor. Before all of the budget stuff hits and so that it can be hopefully. Not gone, you might actually see some revenue. Or to put towards our housing, that's the hope. Um, we'll see, so if it passes the finance, it goes to rules and then. Has to be brought from rules to the floor, um, we've got. We've got good friends on the rules that we think will will help move it, so. That's that piece, the other thing is, I mentioned. That you're gonna have an option to sign on to something as individuals. And I sent you all just before this meeting, something from Mountain Pack, if you remember, we're members of the Mountain Pack. The Western Mountain Communities that. Um, advocate um, for public lands and all, um. And um, it's again, another letter to. All the powers that be, um, and this is addressing. A couple of issues, but again, as mountain towns, how important. Uh, our wilderness areas are and our mountain areas are and our forest areas are to our economies, to our livelihoods. Um, and the fact that the current administration is, wants to do away with environmental reviews. Wants to sell off some of the um. Uh, national monuments that and which are very popular and and have always had bipartisan support. Um, they've been expanded in the last number of years. Eighteen times, nine of which were under Republican administrations and nine of which were under Democratic administrations. And now the move is to privatize a lot of that land, so there is. Read a letter that you got in your email and there's a place, because what it is, it's asking for elected officials themselves. So this is an individual and there, it's all of the western states from Arizona, Colorado, Nevada. All the way up and to Washington, and you'll see my name on the list. Um, but this is an opportunity for you, they they wanna get it out quickly again, so you've got until. Ten o'clock tomorrow morning, so if you wanna read through it. And add your names, it'd be great. Um, but that's, that's totally your decision. Carl, was that the same one where you talked about the condition of fifty-five seventy-six, that same email? No.
No, we sent it out in between our study session and our.
Oh, no, that was really just last. You wouldn't have seen it, you didn't have a computer in front of you, so you haven't seen this.
No, it's waiting for me.
It's waiting for you, that's why I wanted to mention it now, is because otherwise you won't go look at it, but please go look at it and decide. There's a place to click and sign, because I don't wanna, you gotta do it directly, so it comes from your email. Okay. So that they can verify that it's you that wants to be on it. Alright, sounds good, that's all I have to say, so.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, council, last week I was at the Northwest Managers Conference in in uh, in Vancouver, it's always a good. Good experience to to meet my counterparts from across the state and because I'm from Leavenworth, I'm treated like a celebrity, so. Kind of, kind of nice to do.
Yeah.
You're from Leavenworth, I love that.
Yeah, you hear that a lot. So an update on the Norling Lane purchase, uh, so as you guys re- recall, you. Authorized us to authorize the mayor to sign up for sale, and for two lots on Norley Lane. Uh, conditioned on us successfully obtaining conditional use permit from the county for use of those parcels as a parking lot for river users. Um, over the last month or so, the owner, um. Has been back and forth with me and. He's now proposed a boundary line adjustment so that we buy one lot and he retains a lot to develop. And it actually works out well with the way the engineer had laid out a parking lot. Given the setback that's required from the shared wealth, um, and the narrowness of the lot near the golf course. So the owner is going.
I was not understanding.
Feeling left out.
Why don't you, why don't you start over so it's not like you're staying?
Yeah. So, um, long story short, uh, we're. He's moving forward with the boundary line adjustment, he's got his engineer drawing it up and they're gonna uh, file that with the county. I want that to go through before we file a conditional use permit on the lot that we will buy, so. Hopefully by April eighth, um, and if not, we'll bring it to the next meeting, we'll ask you to prove a a different purchase and sale agreement for one lot, not two. At a reduced price, they'll save us a few hundred thousand dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And um, and we'll let the existing PSA expire and just uh, roll that earnest money into a new purchase and sale agreement, so. Hopefully I can get everything um, together in time for the eighth, if not, uh, it'll be at your next meeting. Uh, and the owner knows that this does delay the process, because we won't. Close on the property until we uh, are successfully obtaining.
Is he putting in a parking lot too?
No, no, he wants to build, there's very flexible zoning there, and he wants to build some kind of income-producing.
Okay.
Um, as Zeke mentioned, the downtown steering committee met this morning. The conversation was dominated by a proposal from Peter James Photography about building a parklet. The process, um, he will be presenting this idea to the council on May thirteenth, but I. Um, believe that this really needs to go through the SOMAS. Planning process that's going on now, so told him this isn't going to, it's a great idea and I'm really glad he's bringing this to us, I like it when the community brings these ideas, but it's not something that. We're gonna implement for the summer, um, that this is gonna. We we operate at the pace of government, which means we have to go through process and um. We also think that it's something that we can build and house the benches and the planters that he's proposing. Um, utilizing our our public work crew over the course of the winter. So, um, he will be presenting that, so you'll see his idea, uh, I believe it's the May thirteenth study session will be something for. Um, also wanted to give you guys an update, we tried and tried and tried and tried again to. Uh, reach a settlement with Becky Sabito for the sewer easement. Um, she did not meet deadlines, uh, and did not meet the final and last deadline that I gave, so we um. Have proceeded with condemnation on that parcel, uh, or on the area of the sewer easement that we need in order to fix the line. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that, we are proceeding with condemnation because we could not reach an agreement. Um, and last, uh, just a reminder that there is a wildfire repairness workshop scheduled for this room on Wednesday. April ninth, starting at five o'clock, I don't expect it to take more than a couple of hours. Um, I met with the US Forest Service uh, staff this morning, as well as Mike Smith from. Schlan uh, County Fire District Three, Andrew Magnussen from Emergency Management. We discussed what each of them will be presenting, and I believe we'll have a couple of the additional uh, short presentations as well from. Uh, Cascadia Conservation. And uh, prescribed burn organizations, but those will be very brief, because they don't impact the the city residents as much as the county, so. Uh, please mark that on your calendar for April ninth and please uh, do plan on attending.
What time was that?
Five o'clock.
So that's the Wednesday after the PC meeting.
So we have a.
No.
Yes.
The day after the city council.
It's the day of the city council meeting.
Okay.
I'll talk till my voice goes out, if it goes out. So annual report time is for Finance Department, currently, we were working on four different annual reports. Watch dot, uh, non-discrimination and convention with Andy and her department. Uh, lodging tax annual report, both those are due in uh, mid-May, and then the city's annual report. Shirley's been working on that one, that's hers for over a month and a half now. In her third time. And uh, last Friday, I sat with Crystal for half a day and trained her on doing the PRSA annual report, which we are. Pretty close to completion for that, to be fair. Uh, for your next council meeting, you will see the financial policy coming forward. As I mentioned to you, I don't think there was anything that I had recommend, I did get through it all, I don't see anything, but I'm gonna bring it for you, so. Please do you read through it and let me know if you have any recommended uh, items to consider. Uh, I did meet with the city attorney as well, and uh, I do have the code change for the sewer user charges. So that will be on your next agenda, as well as your quarterly budget amendment. And then tonight, in your packet under tab sixteen is the finance report, if you have any questions.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Uh, yeah, um, I met with uh, Schlan uh, County Development Director, Dino Porter this week. It was uh, really productive, I think we have a path forward toward. Um, adopting our city codes that we recommended adoption of last year, it may require or likely will require a code change. And I'm gonna work to expedite that, so that will be completely forward, um. And that's with regards to permitting used EGA, and there's been something up there, so um, again, path forward there, excited about that. Uh, we, our department got two new applications for B and Bs in the last couple of weeks, so that puts us at, uh. We currently have twenty-nine approved operating, so with this, so we only run for four more, uh, because we have a cap of thirty-five this year. Uh, I had a kickoff meeting with BHC Consulting for our comp plan and it needed several uh. Different staff members and we're super excited to get the following on that. Um, we're going to have a booth at the Earth Day event in April, end of April, and uh, Celeste Berry, our senior planner, will be there along with one of our consultants. Uh, to man that booth and um, talk about climate resiliency and it's gonna be a part of the community. Um, and then just shout out to our team, it's, we're hitting busy season right now, especially with the weather changing. Uh, we had over three hundred inspections so far this year, and that's pretty crazy, considering that was January, February. Um. Then, we have a ton of special events, special events permits we took over from Sue when she changed positions, so we have quite a few. Festival and event permits that we're trying to learn how to process, um, so uh, that everyone's kind of. Taking whatever they can, so we've got great teamwork. Um, and we've had nine free application meetings so far this year, we had a total of five last year, so. We've already almost doubled that, so things are happening. That's why I'm sure, thank you.
Great, Andy?
Uh, yeah, a couple of quick staffing personnel, so I mentioned earlier that JD High was hired as our newest wastewater treatment operator. Um, so we will have three uh, job postings for parks, one is backfilling JD's position as a full-time. Permanent parks maintenance worker, we all, we are also going to transition two of the seven-month park seasonal positions. To be permanent eight-month seasonal, so that will be union covered. And that, uh, that was funded in Florida this year, but just wanna let you know, as we showed the staffing timeline in the. Annual report earlier, that is one of the challenges we have with seasonal employees, so this will make that permanent employees that just get laid offs. Uh, we do still have the city in the year and wastewater to supervisor position open. Um, and then one of the other things I've been working on, second side of things, I received feedback from my team that they're wanting individual meetings with me. Just the one time, so that they can share any of their thoughts they have on each of their divisions, so I started those this week, uh. Like two weeks, I think there's twenty about to work through, so it was very fun to sit down with individuals that I haven't had the opportunity to. Um, the Commercial Street, Nestrian Garfield project is between Third and Eighth Street, that's going on this week. Um, there's road closures down there, and they're planning to have that finished by the end of this week.
Thanks.
Actually, they're planning on the end of the day tomorrow, but we're gonna say that it could be. Uh, the car wash remodel is finishing up, that was completed by our facilities division and uh, the parks team helped out a lot over the winter. Um, if you ever get a chance to stop by, it's looking really good in there, I wish, I don't know if we have before and after photos, but it is. Absolutely changed in there, um, so parking is moving in uh, later this week, back opening. Um, I attended a WCIA sidewalk trip and fall liability training yesterday. And man, there is some really cool stuff, I've stored on, I think it's all be, it's like, we'll call it a one-year plan, but um. A a lot to come from that. Um, and then last item, we are proceeding with replacing old water meters, so when we did the original smart meter project, there was. Uh, yeah, we got about seventeen meters that were never switched over, um, so we used the old meters. With a MTU device to then transmit those from like an analog to the digital signal. Um, there's a lot of issues with those, so in order to have accurate billing, we're switching all of them sound. There are gonna be some shutdowns and things in order to make that happen, uh, a couple of us came in. Overnight to do a meter replacement, I don't know, post a tone without finish, so until we finish this out at the end of the summer, there will be some odd hours, things like that. To see that people's meters switched out at times that don't totally destroy their. That's all.
I forgot one, one more thing I had, uh. As part of the PRSA meeting, uh, we set a goal for our next meeting in May to uh, finalize a mission statement. So by the end of our meeting in May, we will have a mission statement.
Great. Alright, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
I'm riding.
Don't forget to check your email when you get home.
Enjoy that dinner.